Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. I'll call this meeting to order at 9:01. Today's meeting is regarding the draft zoning bylaw, the review. So there's a motion there to approve the agenda. Deputy Mayor is moving that, and Counselor Allwood is moving that, oh, sorry, seconding that the agenda be approved as circulated. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Declaration of pecuniary interest. This is going to affect all of us. We all live here. Any other? More detailed? No? Okay, seeing none. Item four, items for consideration, presentation of draft zoning bylaw, volume four, and preparation for public meeting. So how are we going to start this? Are we getting a presentation from our planner, consulting planner? Okay. We do have Counselor Lowhead on Zoom. And our planner will also be attending virtually. Did everybody read the 243 pages?
It sort of made it interesting in the last game.
Deputy Mayor?
Just gonna say while we're waiting maybe for Ash. Nope, never mind.
There we go. Good morning.
Good morning. How's everybody this morning?
We're fine. How are you?
Doing well.
So we have started the meeting and we're thinking that you're going to make a presentation to start us off, is that right?
Yeah, I'm not sure if anyone's able to share the screen at their end of the presentation.
Yep, I'll do that.
Let's get myself started here. So I hope everyone had a lovely reading weekend because there was quite a bit in that package. Hopefully it didn't bore you too much. I thought it was pretty, lots of information, less than great information, but yeah, certainly a lot of information. So hopefully you had a chance to look at it. If not, we're going to go through a bit today. And if there's questions along the way or at the end, happy to answer those. So with that, we'll get started. So good morning, Council. Just to kind of give you a heads up that this presentation is intended to bring you up to speed on the status of the zoning bylaw update. With a focus on the public feedback that we've heard so far, major changes between the last draft that was presented to you and the this fourth version. And some key areas where we'll need you, your direction before we head into that statutory public meeting, which is our next step. So go to the next slide. So our goal here today is to review what we heard from the public and then walk through some of the major themes. Explain what changes have been made since the last version, as I've previously mentioned, and give Council an opportunity to flag any outstanding issues that they think we should probably address before going to that public meeting. And again, I want to preface this by saying that there's no decision being made today. So certainly some sort of direction that comes out of today's meeting doesn't mean it's the be-all and-all version of the document. There's still plenty of time to make further revisions as we move forward throughout this process until that the final bylaw is being considered by Council. So go to the next. Slide, please. Perfect. So I just wanted to sort of refresh everyone's memory, especially from the public who may be just joining us for the first time on what exactly a zoning bylaw is and why we're updating it. So just a quick refresher, the zoning bylaw is a legal tool that regulates land use and development. So it implements the policies of the official plan, which is more of a visionary document, and it helps reduce land use conflicts and shapes how our community grows. Next slide. And in terms of why we're updating it, we're required by the Planning Act to update the zoning bylaw within a three-year timeframe of adopting the new official plan. Our official plan was adopted in 2017, so we're a bit behind schedule. We did have a major pandemic happen in between there and some, lots of other factors that got us to this point. Other important information that you should know is that the last update that was done to the zoning bylaw was in 2004. And as you can imagine, lots has changed, especially with the new housing priorities and some provincial policy shifts that have been happening, especially in the last, I would say, five years. So if we need a bit more breakdown of that information, I do encourage the, the public to kind of go back to the first presentation that we did at the Committee of the Whole. So I'm trying to do it very, very quickly because there's lots to go through today, but there is more information online and in the, in the previous presentation that we did. So I encourage that to be looked at, or they can reach out and we can, we can provide more information that way. All right, next slide. So this slide just maps out the journey so far from the original consultant in 2021 through some staffing changes, delays, and now to this current stage. Where we picked the process back up and incorporated public consultation. So just since we started the process last March, we've presented the first draft in April. Held the open house in June, which was a great feedback that came from that. And then in September, we provided a summary of findings that Council mostly to give you the opportunity to digest what we heard at that open house. And then this meeting here, which is full of more information to get you, I guess, the ball rolling for the next version of this zoning bylaw for the public meeting. So we're making good progress. And if you think about it, we're about six months in since the process was established. And we're hoping that we'll be able to hit that pre-one-year mark to get you this bylaw passed by Council. Next slide. So we are currently between the revisions proposed in the statutory public meeting. So you can see we're at the, we're nearing the end, which is great. We've hit the, the hump in the road and we're actually headed towards the, the final version. So at this point, there's revisions that were proposed by staff just based on the public feedback that we've received so far and different agencies' comments that, that we've been receiving as well. And we're essentially prepping for that statutory public meeting. So again, like I'll mention it probably a bunch of times over the course of this presentation is this isn't the final version. We're playing around with the wording to see where, you know, we're trying to narrow it down on what, what is going to make sense for Gray Highlands. And that's going to be directed by Council in terms of, you know, what we want that policy language to look like. And then again, by the public, they may bring more things up. We'll revise again before we get to that final revision and that adoption. So still very much a work in progress. Next slide. So today is similar to the Committee of the Whole meeting we had back in April. It's a working session. There's opportunities to ask questions, raise concerns, and make sure staff's on the right track. It's not a decision point. So we're here to make sure that draft reflects the expectations mostly for that public meeting. So that we're, we're getting into the conversation with the public meeting and the draft is representative of what we want the public to see and to comment on. Next slide. So what we've heard, and we'll go to the next slide again. So we've essentially summarized the feedback from online surveys and open houses that were held in June. These were great sessions and what we did was we, we put that public input, info, or public input report in the September meeting, giving you a chance to take a look at it. But what I really wanted to focus on was six big topics emerged out of those conversations, and we're going to go through them a little bit in detail. So I'll go to the next slide. This here is just showing you those six top themes. So housing, the shipping containers, refreshment vehicles, shoreline buffer provisions, the holding provisions for environmental features. And the maximum height of downtown buildings. So these were ones that were pretty big topics in terms of changes that were being proposed when we had the conversation at the Committee of the Whole in April. And again, formed a lot of the conversation that happened at the open house. So we'll just get through each and every one of these and I'll try to do it rather quickly. Next step, or sorry, next slide. So in terms of what we heard for housing, there is a strong public support for more flexible housing options, which is something that Council figured we'd hear. Things like additional dwelling units and tiny homes were, were brought up and discussed and overall generally supported. Support came, however, with concerns about short-term rentals. So the concern was that, you know, if we add an additional dwelling unit or we add more than one additional dwelling unit, are those units going to be used for attainable housing purposes? Or are they going to be used for short-term rentals? Same thing with tiny homes. There was the concern that we're just creating supply to then rent out for short-term rentals. So we probably have to look at a way to control that, and there's different mechanisms of doing so. Specifically in your short-term bylaw that's outside of the zoning bylaw, but we'll get to the point where we get the wording right and then we'll, we'll come up with the next steps as well. The other thing was maintenance. So there was concern about if you have additional dwelling units on properties, what does that maintenance look like? So this is where your property standards bylaw would come into play. Servicing was another major concern throughout the surveys as well. Mostly about whether or not we have the capacity to start allowing everybody to put in ADUs in everyone's backyards or within their dwelling units and what that would do to capacity. And then the compatibility with the existing neighborhood certainly came up as well. So whether or not, you know, a tiny home or a mobile home would be compatible with a full-blown residential subdivision, and let's say Markdale or Flecherton. Mobile homes in the rural areas were also brought up and there was generally a pretty good support for that in the rural area, not necessarily in the urban area. So go to the next slide. So from a shipping container perspective, most respondents didn't object to shipping containers, but their concerns were focused on the aesthetic and whether they belonged in the residential zones. Some did want full prohibition and others were quite okay with them on large rural lots with proper regulations. What we did want to emphasize here is that if there was an interest of moving to allow storage containers in the urban area, that we look at screening or design standards in there. And I think that would resolve some of the concerns that were coming out of the online survey and the, the public feedback that came in from both open house sessions. Next slide.
Greenie.
Refreshment vehicles, there were, there were requests for clear rules on where food trucks can operate. And we have done that in the zoning bylaw. It does have some clear guidelines on where we would be allowing these to take place. They, there was also concern about them being around schools, vacant lots, and seasonal locations. So around schools is mostly, you know, you have a chip truck beside a school. Is it encouraging healthy eating? Vacant lots, having it as the sole use of the property, and then there's some tax implications associated with a refreshment vehicle because it's not a permanent structure. So it, it may have some, some issues that way. And then seasonal locations, you know, whether or not we're okay with it being a seasonal versus year-round. There were some concerns about bypassing zoning rules and impacting nearby to brick and mortar businesses. So again, if you put a refreshment vehicle close to other commercial brick and mortar businesses, would it encourage them to be using the, the refreshment vehicle, sorry? Without having to pay taxes versus the brick and mortar, which is paying taxes and contributing to the local tax base and essentially taking away from their financial sustainability by having a refreshment vehicle located nearby. So the competitiveness aspect of it. Next slide. So shoreline buffers, this was a strong theme and one that gained support, strong support for shoreline protection, which is great to see. People are supportive of shoreline protection, but they do want, what I did see is that they actually would encourage stronger enforcement. There was concern about the loss of natural vegetation and long-term environmental impacts of shoreline development. So I think this, the addition of this policy into the zoning bylaw is going to be generally supported by the, by the residents of Gray Highlands. There are some property rights concerns that were raised, however. So I, there was about two or three individuals that felt that the regulations of vegetation on shorelines on their properties was overarching, we were overextending our rights on their private property to do what they'd like on their property. So sorry, I did want to make sure that that was noted. It wasn't a lot of them, but there were, there was, there was that concern that I did note throughout the, the survey. Next slide, sorry. The holding provisions. So there was some confusion about holding, how holding provisions worked and how they get lifted. But there was also strong support for using them to protect environmental features, which I know most of you were in attendance at the, the meetings or sort of the open houses. And that was very loud and clear that there, a need for, for protecting our environmental features is extremely important to the residents. So what we did do is clarify in the draft that technical adjustments to boundaries can be made without a full rezoning. When you have situations where the mapping isn't actually reflected properly. And then we're also looking for some delegated authority for removal to try and address some of the concerns with, again, that overextension of rezoning a whole bunch of properties that may not have those environmental features present. So just a bit of a understanding of how the mapping works when we, we get these layers and we add them to our GIS and then rezone properties. They, they are essentially studies that are done from an aerial view of, of the, an aerial view. And then taking a look at what type of features are there based on the information and studies that come out of the M and R, MECP Conservation Authorities. And generally speaking, they haven't gone to the site to take a look if it's actually in that exact location. It's mostly a, you know, a general idea that, hey, there's probably something here and further analysis is warranted. And that's why the holding provisions proposed to be added so that it can trigger us looking in more detail on what is actually on site. So in areas where the idea here is that if it has a holding provision and then it does the assessment and the, for wetland in particular, let's say the wetland is actually a lot smaller than what is actually mapped out on the, the mapping. That holding provision can get lifted. Where the technical adjustments to boundaries can be made is when the mapping's incorrect. So we have a couple of instances lately where we're seeing mapping, like most recent mapping coming from the official plan and the Conservation Authorities that don't actually represent the zoning layer that we have as it gets dated. So the idea there is that we could do a technical adjustment without having to worry about the holding provision. So again, that's up for discussion and whether or not we want to try to iron that out a bit better. The other part that I wanted to emphasize here is that Council may want to look at delegating the authority for the removal of the holding provision to staff. As I do imagine, there'll be quite a few coming to you. And if it's all technical, whether or not Council wants to see those, or whether or not they're satisfied with staff taking a look at it, getting the necessary environmental studies, reports, and then being able to say, yep, okay, this meets, you know, necessary requirements. Let's look at that holding provision. So we can have a bit of a discussion about that in a little bit, but that is, that's where we are with holding provisions of the environmental features. So next. Thank you. Maximum building height. So there were mixed views on increasing height limits, especially in the downtown core. I had done a scale and it was very difficult to sort of pinpoint because it honestly was about 30% want to see it low, 30% want to see it mid, 30% want to see it hot. Like, so it didn't really give us any clear detail on what the residents would really like to see. So the biggest concern that came out of this was the shadowing and the loss of the small-town character. So what we did in the zoning bylaw, and again, it's just a, I thought it was easier to put this in as, here's what you can do if you wanted to increase the height. It's not necessarily saying increase the height. It's more of a, if you want to increase height, but still maintain that small-town character as the residents are really concerned about, is you could do this shadowing or this stepping back of height. So you have, you know, let's say you're downtown Markdale, you'd have your two-story or three-story building. And then you would step it back to be able to go up higher in order to allow that residential development to happen on the upper floors. So again, up for discussion, it was added in just to give you an option of what it could look like if you were to allow higher heights in your urban areas. And yeah, the stepping is very, very common in, in a lot of other municipalities. And it can be scratched and we can go back to saying four, four stories if you'd like and no stepping. Or again, it was added in just for discussion purposes at this meeting here and then again with the, with the public at the open, or public meeting. Next one, please. All right. So in terms of what we actually did to the draft from volume three to volume four, we're going to just run through some of these changes. And it is highlighted again in the report to Council that was on the agenda today. But we'll just have a quick presentation for you guys in case there was some members of public that didn't get to a chance to review it. So in terms of definitions, what we did with agricultural-related OFDUs just made reference completely to the county OP. So they reflect exactly what the county OP says. Compatible and secondary were added as a, essentially to respond to some of the residents who had mentioned that when an OFDU is considered, we want to make sure that there's compatibility and that it's secondary in nature. So one of the, one of the comments that was raised was, well, why don't we have a definition for those? So those have been added. Place of worship. It was a comment again from the public that had mentioned that the definition that currently existed, and again, it hadn't changed since the original bylaw in 2004, was very much predominant to one, I would think it's Catholic faith version versus other faiths. So we essentially made it a bit more culturally diverse. Propane exchange station, this is a new one that's, as we've been going through the process and as I've been jumping into a little bit more of the operating side of things in Gray Highlands. There's a few things that have been popping up that I just felt were necessary to try to clear up in the zoning bylaw to give us some direction for future amendments. But there are some, mostly the, the, sorry, the gas stations, the service stations that are interested in having, you know, yeah, and home hardwares, let's say, are interested in having that propane exchange ability in the front. So like a gated area where you can exchange your propane tanks. That's actually not listed anywhere in the permitted uses in the zoning bylaw. So we just felt like it was worth having in here so that it could give us the ability to say, yes, it's a primitive use as an accessory use to whatever use that you're doing. Versus us having to make them go through minor variances or zoning amendments to allow that use. And safe access was added by the Conservation Authority, mostly to establish what safe access is when you're creating a driveway over wetlands. So yes, those are the ones that we've added and they all have reasons why we've added them. Over to the next slide. Okay, so these are more of the, the nitty-gritty revisions that were made. So in terms of technical revisions, the wetland holding provision at the last, in the last volume had a 30-meter setback with the understanding that we were having to reduce it in order to align with the Conservation Authority changes that had taken place, but we've moved that back to 120. So the wetland holding provision, the only change that was made was going from 30 meters to 120 meters. So, and that reflects the public feedback that we got as well. In the zones, it was just noted that I, we didn't have the future development zone listed in here. So that was just added. So no major changes there. Additional dwelling units, the Niagara Skartment Commission has finally provided us comments and they have run into this issue. And I believe it was, it was either this or Committee of Adjustment where we, we dealt with a, an application for an additional dwelling unit in, I think it was a minor variance in the, in a Niagara Skartment protected area. And that is actually not a permitted use, even though the zoning bylaw currently says it is. So the Niagara Skartment Commission wanted it very clear that we eliminate the ability for a detached additional dwelling unit to be located in an area regulated within the NEP. So that, that was added based on their suggestion. Home industry, we did add a permitted use of a home industry on lots between five and 20 hectares at a maximum of 100 square meters. And I'm sure this will come up in the discussion on OFDUs because right now we, we do not allow any type of home industry use. Anything underneath the 20 hectares in the prime agricultural land. And so this was the suggestion that came from a member of the public is to allow some sort of home industry on the lot and have it significantly restricted at the 100 square meters so that it can't jump into something bigger. Again, we'll have a discussion about whether or not that's in line with where Council's headed, but I'm, I'm sure it'll form part of the OFDU conversation that we have later. In terms of setbacks on development, fronting on county roads, the wording in the bylaw had indicated that this, the setback was applicable everywhere. And on further review and conversations with the county, they did indicate that that's not, there is a provision within that bylaw that says it is not in effect in urban settlement areas. So that wording just got changed to reflect the actual bylaw. And then the height restrictions, as I previously mentioned, we added this step back in height regulation provision in the general section. Again, to try to resolve some of the concerns that the members of the public had with going too high and it reducing the, the feel of, of the small-town character that we have in Gray Highlands. In terms of fence requirements, we also added a height of fences in commercial industrial zones. Right now it'd be limited to 1.8, but in commercial industrial zones, we felt like we could go a little bit higher with that in order to, I guess, protect that, that commercial industrial zone and then any type of adjacent uses that are beside it. So we've allowed that to go up to 2.5. And again, up for discussion if Council wants to, to discuss that further. But it was a, one that we're starting to see, not necessarily just in Gray Highlands, but in other areas. And I wanted to make sure that we had something in there to, to say that, yeah, you could go higher if you're in a commercial industrial zone. Next step, sorry, next slide. The development within the regulated area, again, this was a suggestion or a change from the Conservation Authority when they had our, it was in their comments. We were referencing an old regulation. So they just wanted to make sure we modified the reference to the newer version. Parking design standards, the, we eliminated the need for bicycle parking to encourage developers to be as close to the front line as possible. So we did add bicycle parking as a requirement for all uses that were being proposed in the zoning bylaw. But in this instance here, when we look at the actual, you know, a vacant lot, let's say in Markdale. If we were to encourage them to be as close as possible, but then also require them to have bicycle parking, you're probably going to have to push it back. And it would may deter them from going straight up to the property line. So this was just a, not requiring the, the bicycle parking within that downtown core to allow them to get closer to the front lot line. Driveway and entrance widths, we modified the maximum entrance width from 6.5 to 7, and that was a suggestion that came from our transportation department. And that's based on our current entrance policy. So just to maintain consistency. In terms of the agricultural zone, as I mentioned before, we added a home industry as a permitted use for properties under 20 hectares, but no less than five. And then clarified that a non-farm diversified use must be secondary to an agricultural use, recognizing that secondary is now defined in the zoning bylaw as well. In the residential zone, we reduced the minimum lot area for full-service properties from 500 to 300 per unit and increased lot coverage to encourage density. In the residential multiple zone, we increased lot coverage from 45 to 50% and the height requirements from that 15 to 20 meters. Again, just increasing that density and the ability to allow for, for more attainable development. Next slide. In the downtown commercial zone, we increased lot coverage from 50 to 80% for properties solely on sanitary. I believe it was larger for sanitary and water, but this, just the sole sanitary was limited to 50. But the, the idea here is that if you didn't have, why are we changing, you know, 30% variance if there is no septic? The water itself is, is likely easier to get to. So we left it at the 80%. And again, we can have discussions on whether or not that's, that's appropriate. We increased minimum front yard from zero to 0.6 as requested by the operations staff. And that is essentially to make sure that we have enough space for snow and maintenance purposes in the winter. We added a maximum front yard and this is new and one that I wouldn't mind getting some feedback from you on. Essentially forcing new construction on full service and municipal sanitary to be 1.5. And the idea here is that you won't have development happening at a six-meter setback or 20 feet back in the downtown core. You're going to force them to come right up to the road between that 0.6 and that 1.5 to maintain that consistency in the downtown of buildings closer to that front lot line. Again, we increased the maximum height from 11 meters to 20 meters and then created a minimum height to again ensure that new development has a to again ensure that new development has a second story. And again, it's just going back to that, we want that consistency in the downtown core to be uh right along the front at least two stories and and be sort of, yeah, consistent with the rest of the development that's already there. In terms of mixed use commercial zones and institutional zones, uh we increased again the height from that eleven to twenty, still subject to the step back as well. Uh recreational resort zone, we we made those changes that were uh that reflected the direction from the NEC. So this was one that came up a few times during the open houses uh that, you know, that wasn't consistent with the official plan and the NEP uh provisions. Um so they wanted us to take a deeper dive at this one to make sure it was going to be consistent. So what we did was we modified it based on comments received from the NEC and essentially matched it completely to the local official plan, which is what they had encouraged us to do. And in terms of holding provisions, we are now reflecting a hundred and twenty meters from provincially significant wetlands instead of the thirty meters, which is uh again, was supported by by the members of the public during both sessions. Next slide. My maps, everyone's gonna ask me about maps. So we're still refining the zoning maps and again, happy that we didn't make the change because we would have spent all the time going back to thirty meters versus the one twenty. So we are, we do have this as a work in progress. Uh the holding provisions on adjacent lands to environmental features are going to be getting added. Uh I believe we've already started those ones, car significant habitat and the natural heritage features. And then there are roughly about ten individual lots, sorry, lots that staff are assessing for rezoning. And this is going to be brought back during the public meeting. Uh these individuals are are also going to be circulated separately, but they just seem to be um areas that didn't really make sense for the zones that they have right now. And we wanted to just do a deeper dive on those ones and make sure they're reflective of I mean, of the official plan specifically and then our our goals and objectives as a municipality as we move forward in that area. Next slide. Alright, next slide. So we, as you are fully aware, there was two discussion papers that were created uh to support the the this next volume of the zoning bylaw and the discussions uh for today's meeting. Uh one on wetland buffers and one on on farm diversified uses. Uh both reflect some of the more complex contentious issues that were raised at the open house. So I felt that it was very, very important for us to get into the nitty nitty gritty of these uh these issues and try to give you the history, the understanding of why it's there in the first place, uh what the new legislation is saying, why we're recommending changes, what reflects the best interest. And then essentially giving you the tools you need in order to make the decisions necessary uh for the zoning bylaw, the final version. And or sorry, I guess in this case, for the next public meeting and guiding the the conversation as we move throughout this process. So in terms of the wetland pa- uh buffers, this essentially clarifies confusion caused by the recent changes to provincial wetland policies. It identifies inconsistencies between the thirty meters that was imposed by the conservation, sorry, the Conservation Authority setback of the thirty meters of when they're going to be looking at uh impacts to wetlands. And then those natural heritage guidelines. And again, there's more detail in the discussion paper if anyone's interested in learning more about this. But because there was such public feedback highlighting highlighting those concerns about losing ecological oversight, we wanted to make sure that we had this done right. One of the biggest concerns I had with the re- by keeping the one twenty, if the thirty was only going to be get regulated was the staff implications of having someone on staff or hiring someone that has some ecological background to be able to comment on those thirty by one twenties. So anything within a thirty to a hundred and twenty meter setback was no longer going to be looked at. So we had conversations with the county and their their understanding, again, is highlighted in the in the report. But they confirmed that as long as a planning act application is triggered between the thirty and the one twenty, the ecology staff at the county are going to be able to review it. So that's perfect. Uh because the idea here was that we would have a holding provision up to that one twenty. In order to remove the the holding provision, you need to go through a zoning bylaw amendment. And the zoning bylaw amendment uh will then trigger the the comments to the county. The county will then comment on those thirty by one twenty to determine whether or not it's uh it's okay to develop in that area. So I this one here, we were able to solve uh and have made the suggestion to go back to the one twenty. And I'm pretty sure we will have everyone's support to do that based on the conversations that were happening at the open house. Next slide. Now, this one was a very hefty report. I'm sure everyone's going to be experts on on farm diversified uses in in great county and Gray Highlands at this point. Uh I did ha- uh provide a video and it will be available on online later this week. That's sort of um, I guess it summarizes some of the misconceptions that we heard at the public meeting. So there was a lot of confusion and concern that was expressed by the public about what OFDUs allow. Um and I I felt that this really warranted a really big deep dive uh to make sure that everyone's on the same page when they're they're considering, you know, policies and uh rules and regulations governing OFDUs as we move forward with the zoning bylaw update. So the the idea here is that um I guess we'll have a discussion about this as we and once we finish the presentation and and sort of get council's opinion on this. But what I did for now is left the policy exactly as it was the last uh that during volume three. Uh it matches exactly identically to the county policies, which is pretty liberal, I would say, for where uh the residents really wanna go. Uh and then I I've included some policy from different municipalities just to sort of give you some ideas on what can be done. And I do hope that we can have some conversations about which direction we want to head uh as a community to to, you know, form some sort of uh policy for the public meeting to try and get some feedback on. So I it's up to council as to whether or not they want to maintain the current county aligned approach for the purpose of the public meeting or if we want to try and get it narrowed down with a, you know, maximum square footage. Um but the the, yeah, I let's just save that for now and we'll have that conversation once we're done. I could probably talk about OFDUs now for for quite a while. So I'll hold, I'll hold any more comments on that, we'll discuss later. Next slide. So I guess at this point, it's uh whether or not there's anything else that you heard at the open house uh or, you know, just in the last few months, while individuals may be approaching you, taxpayers may be approaching you on, you know, some of the changes that are happening in the zoning bylaw. And whether there's anything that we may have missed or need further analysis or refinement on, based on what you've been hearing. Um and we can have that conversation too. Um what I'll do is I'll just get into, I'll finalize this presentation first and we'll be able to kind of open it up for for discussion and questions and comments. But uh so we'll just go to the next slide. I just want you to make sure you're thinking about that as well when we we have the discussion. So just to highlight what the next steps are for the zoning bylaw, we are going to keep doing some technical refinements and mapping updates based on things that hit our plate as we keep going throughout this process. There are still agencies that haven't provided feedback. Uh we are expecting to see more feedback come in once we circulate for the public meeting. Uh those individual property owners whose zoning is changing, the idea based on the last conversation I had with council was that we are going to circulate each one that was going to be impacted. Uh and then once council is satisfied with a draft of the, I guess, direction from this meeting and coming up with a, you know, rough idea of what that draft's gonna look like, we will proceed with public meeting and I'm hoping that we can get that to late November, early December, hopefully some time before Christmas. And take that feedback, I'll work throughout the holidays and early January and hopefully be able to bring you something back within January and February. So we're gonna try really hard to get this done within that one year timeframe. And next slide. And then again, we're just highlighting here that the we're we're going to be pushing from that revisions proposed right into that statutory public meeting. So we're getting to the, getting to the end, thankfully. Next slide. And this here just is highlighting again, uh I just wanted to emphasize here that the what we did the last time was considered an open house, uh so very much open dialogue between the public asking questions and myself presenting. Uh the public meeting is going to be a bit more ritual, uh so it's think of similar to a public planning hearing. Uh so we'll have a chair, we'll have uh individuals come up to speak with timeframes and how long they can speak. I will be there to answer questions in regards to the zoning, similar to how we would handle a um comments and questions on individual planning applications. So definitely more formal. Uh individuals will have to come and state their name, state their their address and then provide their comment. Uh it's essentially like a delegation. So it will be a more formal process. Uh I just wanted to make that clear for everybody so they knew it was coming. And I think that's uh next step. I think it's just going to be the context for uh any type of feedback that may be from this meeting or other um issues they ran into and wanting to provide comment or concerns about the draft or whether we've considered uh different areas of zoning changes that they may have uh wanted us to look at and we haven't. So with that, I will open it up to Chair Allen. I was, I think I was, is Mayor McQueen, but in I think it was Chair Allen that was uh was governing this one, right?
Yes, yes, I'll be chairing this meeting. Thank you very much for that presentation. Lots of information. I saw some hands wanting to go up to stop you partway through to make comments, but uh we'll obviously wait waited till the end. So questions, comments, I don't know just where we're gonna go, whether this is gonna jump all over the place. But uh Mayor McQueen, start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for the presentation, Ashley. Um I guess off the top, I will say that I think before we go to the public, we need maps. Because people won't have any clue how effects are property unless you have maps that relate to their property. I remember back in the old four to oh seven process, that was the big thing, was mapping. And back then, the big thing was was the hundred and twenty meters that were coming in and how that uh greatly affected a lot of properties that people had no clue on until later after the fact. And I think there were three hundred properties that were going to be sterilized. And it was the conversation at the time, should we let those property? I see you have ten here, you're gonna let people know. There were three hundred and I thought it was too costly and they weren't gonna let those properties uh be aware of the changes and uh which I think was wrong, but anyway, it it moves forward. Um a couple of our comments just generally, and you said that there's ten lots that you were going to suggest rezoning. You did get into any details on what those were. I think we have to be careful because I know I think it's important that if we're going to make a change, they'd be contacted. I know, Mr. Chair, that happened to you personally with regards to something that changed to the last process and and not being known. So I think we, but I think we have to be careful because if if those were created under the old rules and we're bringing new rules in into conformity, I mean, you look back to the to the part about um uh with regards to um MDS, how their suggestion that those lots should be sterilized. Well, they were created before even MDS was brought in. So I mean, you gotta be careful that we don't sterilize people's property from new changes that were created from old rules. So I think we have to be careful on that. Going back to the NEC comments, uh I know that when uh they were going through the last policy paper in two thousand and fifteen, which was approved in two thousand and seventeen, because I was on the commission, ADUs were allowed in rural. Protection and natural were not. I know I argued, I argued strongly that it should be in the natural area, but it was not. Um we're we're ten years later, uh you suggested that we should put that in there. But I think, and I know I'll I'll look at my colleague here who sits on the commission, I know they're going through the process of reviewing that plan now. I think where we have gone for a long way, ADUs have become a a tool in the toolbox that allows um housing, and I would be very cautious for us to include that in our policy when that could possibly be changed to that next round of NEC policies. Uh saying that, if that is what stays once they go through that, I think it's to be adopted by two thousand and twenty-seven. So I think it's a little bit premature on that part because it is allowed in rural. I know that for a fact. So um other comments, with the regards to thirty meter to the hundred and twenty meter, um and it's provincial directive at the thirty meters, we've used this tool in the past that you can have develop a checklist. And a checklist could detail a number of items that maybe puts you into that next. If you're a site visit and somebody's making that application and the the strong part of the hundred and twenty meters and maybe the hundred and twenty meters is in place, but a checklist could determine whether they need to go to that ecology or from the county or whatever. And and I'll give you an example of a checklist item. I remember of of a of an application being processed. And the, it was a rural piece of land and there was a cattle pond that was dug, but it was considered provincial wetland. But it was dug probably fifty years ago to water cattle and was created. It wasn't a natural feature. And there's an example where sometimes things can, you know, get all rolled up into a ball. And so uh we did the checklist a bit around last, in the last zoning process with regards to around Lake Eugenia and certain qualifications that were needed there. And that checklist sometimes on that part was whether you needed to do a full EIS or you could do a scoped EIS. And that's where I'm going back to the one twenty and, you know, um there there may be and 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 mapping. Uh when we did the two thousand and four zoning, there was issues with the mapping and and one of the maps were there were two maps the county had. One was where they had developed the map, but it was discovered that somehow things got bumped and the actual mapping to what was approved was wrong. But they didn't wanna go back. And so there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues around the mapping. So I think, you know, mapping, going back to the park, going to the public, that has to be critical before you go there. And I guess the question with the thirty to the one twenty, you talk about provincial significant wetlands, but what will be the setbacks once the mapping shows wetlands? Because I think that's that's going to be in the new mapping. It's not just determining the present provincial significant wetlands, but wetlands themselves. So I guess I'm looking for a comment there.
Okay, Ashley?
Yep, of course. Uh so just to kind of go through the maps, we'll definitely be at the public meeting. So just to reassure everybody that we will not go to public meeting without the mapping. So that that will definitely be there. The ten lots, uh I'll give you one example, uh it's the old hospital. So, you know, the old hospital has an institutional zone on it. In order for it to be developed, it probably needs to change from institutional to something else. So that's one example. Uh there's all others that just, for some reason, carried over some zoning that just doesn't make quite a lot of sense. And we actually think that there'll be uh public, the public shouldn't be too angry about what we're trying to change, but I don't wanna get into detail of those ones. We will, we can definitely provide you a report with what those changes are. And if you'd like it to be before the public meeting, happy to do that. Uh NEC comments, you're right, ADUs are allowed in the rural, they're not allowed in the secondary settlement areas. So the policy is strict to just the secondary settlement areas. And you are also right in that they are updating the language and are intending to have that change happen uh where ADUs will be permitted within those areas. I believe that's something that they're working on uh before two thousand and twenty-seven. And I can try to word the policy in a way that just says alignment with the NEP. Yeah, let me play around with that one. But there may be ways for us to say that once this is, you know, if it gets changed, this will no longer apply and it could be addressed through a housekeeping amendment as well. The thirty to a hundred and twenty meters with the development checklist, that is how they're operating right now from my understanding and I can confirm that. Uh perhaps with a report to council at the next meeting. Uh but essentially, when something comes in, it goes to county ecology. County ecology assesses whether or not in EIS, a scoped EIS or no EIS is required. So those things are already being taken into account. Um so and I think the development-
Just, 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 I think that has to be, sorry, I think that has to be explained. So people understand that, especially when it comes up, because then that makes sense. But all of a sudden, it's like a hundred and twenty, no, I'm doing it. That's the, that's the part that that, you know, if it's explained, the process and depending on that, I think that goes a long way for doing that. Sorry. So I don't know if people agree to that, but I think that, you know, being open of of the process, I think is very important. It's just this or that, right?
Yep, certainly. I can make sure that's part of the presentation.
Be looking over here.
Uh and then the other aspect of it, so the the thirty meter wetland setback already exists, there's no changes there. Uh the one twenty had existed, we were actually pulling away to go to thirty, it is back to one twenty. So that, those rules are still there. I think the important thing to remember when it comes to some of these uh the setbacks and the holding provisions that are added for the environmental features or the natural heritage features that weren't previously identified as holding provisions is the rule to, the rule was still there. It was just not transparent. So we would get an application and it would be within those areas. And then it would be, you know, oh, we have these other concerns. And how do you make sure that those areas are protected and the public is aware that that is on their property without having a zoning uh classification, I guess, that highlights it. So and again, I can explain this in the presentation with the public that just because you have a holding provision on your property does not sterilize your development. It's essentially saying, hey, hold the phone, we gotta make sure that we verify that, you know, the car store, verify the wetland or verify the species at risk. to ensure that there's not going to be an environmental issue before you were able to develop. And in most cases, there's going to be areas within that identified area that you're going to be to be able to develop without concern. But it's trying to make that process as easy as possible, which is why we're also recommending that we consider the removal of the holding provision at a staff level versus it having to come to council and potentially be held up for for a two to three month period, depending on how many applications are coming forward. So, yeah, does that does that help? Did I answer all of the questions? Okay.
I think so. Follow up, Mayor McQueen.
Yeah, so I I'm only addressing the comments. There's a couple of other ones to that was the presentation. The propane, I would think that have to go through TFSA, which is the authority that would allow you. And maybe you want to check that out because I think that would, you know, setbacks, you know, however, whatever, whether they got being cages, who who knows on that. The refreshment vehicles, I know that has been something over the years. And I think part of the issue that comes up is if somebody has a restaurant and they've gone through the part of getting zoning, paying commercial tax, and all of a sudden somebody sets up a refreshment just down the road, which I think that really you know, they don't, they just set up a shop and maybe pay a a permit where the other restaurant owner has had to go through all that and pay, you know what I mean? It's that, you know. So I don't know how others, other municipalities, I'm sure you know, but it's it's sort of in a in a setting and location that can is what I remember hearing in the past of competition and how is that fair? So I I don't know if there's any thoughts on that or comments, or do you have any thoughts on that from? But that, I don't know, that seems to be something that comes to mind is is on the on the location. They've been somewhere like, you know, there used to be one at Gray Road Four and thirteen, maybe it's still there, I can't remember. And and so it's not in competition to anybody. But if there's, you know, restaurants, six restaurants and somebody sets up a hot dog stand. And maybe there's limits to what they can sell versus what, you know, I don't know, it just it's just in a sense of fairness. Right on that. I don't know if anybody else has any comments on that, but certainly if there's a Blue Jay game and somebody sets up a refreshment thing, just that, you know, I shouldn't use that example, but
That's been the concern with home occupations and things like that in the past, too, that there's a business here that's paying business taxes and has a parking lot to pave and then remove the snow and then somebody next door can be operating out of the one room in their house. So it's hard.
I think, Mr. Chair, through you, that I think that's that's why there's a limit size to that, right? But that's right. You know, you you gotta because then if it's an easier way to do it, people go the easier route, right? But there has to be limitations on on that as well. I have other other items that you weren't addressing. That maybe we'll get into other items that that I know. I I will use one example. I know in the past and I sort of keep some of the stuff in my head.
Mayor McQueen, I think Counselor Dubic wants to comment on your last.
I'll hold, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the those refreshment vehicles, I think, is a very good conversation because it it does help to stir up business and interest and tourism and, you know, and it does bring people out in terms of, you know, certain gathering spots as well. And I I think there can be different views from business owners as well, you know, speaking to one business owner who has a bricks and mortar location. You know, it does allow one of these refreshment vehicles, you know, selling fries and hot dogs or whatever that is. You know, twenty feet away from from them. And, you know, they state that it's it's, you know, how customers come to them and say, well, that's curious that, you know, you're allowing competition to be there. But their response is, well, actually, it's not competition. It's 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 more of a cumulative positive impact. Because, you know, you're bringing more people in, you know, their offerings can be a little bit different. And, you know, while, you know, the bricks mortars may offer, you know, coffee and sandwiches and, you know, some, you know, other aspects and and sort of a variety of different sort of products. I know that the refreshment vehicle may offer something different and they found it's more of a cumulative aspect and more of a positive impact for for their business as well. So so it so it can work sort of in a different way as well, right? So that's why you find, say, like in a in a neighborhood when there's, you know, if you think of a bigger city where all the, say, the camping equipment stores seem to be on one strip and 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 folks say, oh, my gosh, that's so much competition. You know, they'll say, well, no, it's great because people know that, you know, if you want, if you want camping equipment, you could come down to this one street. There is like three or four different options. And it's it's cumulative positive impact. So there could be different ways to think about it and I'll just leave it at that.
Mayor McQueen?
Well, thank you for that comment. And maybe a follow up to that would be, they used to have what they call hawkers and peddlers. Process where you had to buy a permit to do it if you're, and so maybe there is a process that that if somebody's doing that, they're not maybe in direct competition, but they're complement to. Right? I mean, and maybe that's through the permit. Yeah, an example where you go to Gualph and there's like car dealership after car dealership after car. Maybe that's a bigger but, you know, they're all on the same strip and you wonder how that works, but it it does bring people to that area. So there's a lot of truth to what you're saying. It's just, it's just long as it's compliment and not direct competition. So maybe you're limited to hot dogs or maybe you're limited to fries or where the other ones have to sit down and you have more of the, you know. I I just, it it's just things that have came up, like, for example, in 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 Markdale, right in that corner, there was an issue a few years back and that came up of location and stuff and 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 it's it's not, has been been a big issue, but it's just trying to find that sweet spot. So it's not direct competition, but yeah, compliment is is one, but maybe the hawkers and peddlers, and we don't have that anymore, I don't think. The hawkers and peddlers, there was a permitting process that would allow you to have. Do we just still have that?
Clerk Nelson?
Thank you through you, Chair Allen. We do have a refreshment vehicle application. I can't exactly remember what it's called, but they have to go through and pay a permit fee annually as well as have like the fire department inspect the vehicles and that kind of stuff. So there is a whole process for that.
So let's change from hawkers to, I think I remember that now.
I'll just follow up to that. The other, like the doubles advocate side of things, too, is that a lot of refreshment vehicles, at least that I've seen come in approaching from a from a a resident perspective, it's sort of like an incubator as well. So you could have the idea of somebody wanting to test out a market or test out a you know, a very unique thing, and then it becomes a brick and mortar as well, encourages them to locate in Markdale once they've been there or Fleischer Ten, once they've been there. Is the market good enough to be able to, you know, get to a point where they're brick and mortar? So that's just another thing that I wanted to kind of get you guys to think about, too. It's there's competition, yes, there's the potential for it to become, you know. I know that there's a lot of places from a tourism side of things where they'll focus one little neighborhood on just, you know, refreshment vehicles and you will go to that location and you may, you know, try one thing from this one and one thing from over here or a dessert from this one. And it creates kind of like a hub, like a food hub that is also very successful in some municipality. So the way we looked at it right now is the permitted, the only way you're going to get a refreshment vehicle in the draft that's that's currently in front of you is as an accessory to a main. So you can't be located on a vacant lot. Unless it goes through some sort of planning process, so then you're evaluating whether or not that's the best use for the site. The idea is that it is accessory to. And again, it's that whole, let's test out this market was sort of what I was trying to get at versus it being the sole use on a property and it going to be there forever. So again, happy to discuss further on what the the rules and regulations kind of look like in that draft, if that's helpful, but I think for the purpose of the public meeting, it's probably okay to leave as is. And again, pending further comments from the rest of council.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else have comments, questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you very much, Chair Allen. I think the discussion and the direction is needed for the OFDUs, and I know that that's going to be a larger topic here on this table. The current draft changed frankly, changes significantly the policies of Gray Highlands, where we have been historically significantly more restrictive than the counties of the counties' policies. And I understand, like, I first off, really appreciate the discussion paper. It gave very good background information on how we got the policies, where the direction came from, the support of the agricultural and farming community for on-farm diversified uses. The rationale behind the need for on-farm diversified uses in terms of economic benefit, but also community benefit and succession planning and everything. So I just thank you very much for that, because I think that does help us to explain and have clear conversations with community members where there's just a a flat no because of a fear of industrialization of the rural atmosphere. That being said, limitations were put in place because of impacts to the Gray Highlands character and such. And there's some of it you could argue would be NIMBYism, but some of it is the rationale behind not wanting to see large scale operations affect small scale properties. And so the county's official plan policies allow for a larger operation on smaller lots than even Gray Hands currently allows OFDUs, period. And my concern is is kind of in that section. Like, I would like us to be more restrictive on smaller lots. If we're going to even consider allowing OFDUs on parcels that are smaller than twenty hectares, they should not be allowed to still be seven hundred and fifty square meters or the two percent. Right? Or, you know, because the policies at the county are saying the seven fifty is allowed anywhere up to two percent of the of the parcel. To me, that has concerning impacts in future pressures of trying to influence policy to sever lots smaller. And I know right now there are policies that protect the severing and 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 breaking up of prime ag lands. But that kind of policy may not always exist if there's significant economic pressure saying, wow, the only way we can make a fifty acre parcel work is if we make it to twenty five acre parcels and have two shops. And now I can make that fifty, that twenty five acre parcel farm work because I've got a shop on on two of them. And so I think that when we look at the zoning bylaw, understanding that there should be refreshed and reviewed more frequently than it has been, it also might be in place for a significant period of time that we don't want to we want to make sure that we're having the right protections in place, so we're not encouraging the wrong kind of development and pressures in the future. As I think how I'm looking at it, like, what is the future impact of the decisions we're making? Because the zoning bylaw is the first update in a in a significant period of time for Gray Highlands and it will have a significant impact in the future. And so I do want to have the discussion, how can we be more restrictive with OFDUs than the county? Even if Gray Highlands is willing to be less restrictive than we are current. I think that's kind of where I'd like to start the conversation here at the table, because I think this is kind of a, the bigger elephant in the room when it comes to this zoning bylaw.
Okay. In that paper, it said that we may be opening ourselves up to more appeals by not following the county OP. But we've, we've always been told that we can be more restrictive. And if it's in our policies, in our official plan, in our zoning bylaw, is, are we opening ourselves up? Ashley?
Yeah, certainly. I can elaborate a bit more on that. So you have absolutely every right to be more restrictive than county. There's no issues there at all. And you can make that as restrictive as you'd like. I think where the what you haven't seen happens yet from base, based on my knowledge, is somebody who is suggesting, most of the people that are applying are going to just maintain that two hundred and fifty square meters, which has been the longstanding rule in Gray Highlands, right? But when they propose the five hundred, if they were to appeal it, the way that the OLT will look at, you know, whether or not it's consistent with policy, they're going to go through the provincial planning statement, the county OP, and essentially what's restricted right now is our OP and the zoning bylaw. But then when you're looking at, you know, they did an official plan amendment to increase the size, they're going to be looking at all the other factors of, you know, land use compatibility, whether or not there's any environmental degradation. If there isn't any, then there there may be, you know, an opportunity for them to go higher and and then win that appeal. So you got to think of the OLT as very much looking at the planning merits alone. And then governing that provincial planning, their interests first and then county's interests and then local. So it's not to say that you're going to get a slew of amendments because you haven't, or appeals, because you haven't been getting them already. But I think if there's a little bit more, I like, as a planner, I'd be recommending that you be that an as of right number be created to avoid the zoning amendment. And you could keep that at the two fifty. That's that's, you know, if you're satisfied with the two fifty, create an as of right two fifty is what I'd probably recommend. And then allow a maximum with an amendment at some, you know, essentially what other municipalities are doing. But certainly, you can be more restrictive than county. There's no issues with that at all.
Because when I I read that, I thought, well, what about height restrictions? Like, there's all sorts of things that we put certain limits on and anybody can apply for anything. So are we if we say four stories high and somebody wants to go five and we say no, are we opening ourselves up? And and I'm I'm not asking you to answer that, but it's to me, I I think we just need to decide what we want and that's what goes into our zoning and and official plan. So we're on to OFDUs. I think that's is going to be the big discussion. So maybe we should get that try to get that done, yeah, started and done first. Does one, does somebody want to put out a a number or Mayor McQueen?
Discussion if I may. So when we get into policy, policy more sets the size, which is our official plan. Zoning says what you can do on that, because we had this discussion back over in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, two councils back about the size, the fifty, the twenty, or sorry, the hundred, no, the forty, the twenty and under that. So, so again, that's official plan. Zoning is what you can do in those areas and how that all goes about. So I've always been the thought that if you go anywhere below twenty hectares, it could be on a sliding scale. I'll give you an example, Mr. Chair, and you'll appreciate this. If you're a cabinet maker or a kitchen maker, you may have a smaller shop that provides a business to the community, but you need a twenty by twenty four rad or or to build your cabinets. Or you could be an HVAC guy. You build all the the heating and the all the ductwork. You you do that. I've seen it. We've all seen it. But it may not be to the scale of of two hundred and fifty square meters that is needed. Or you could be, you know, electrician, you could be a contractor, a plumber, you know what I mean? You could have, you know, where people come and get supplies, but I'm thinking more of the kitchen cabinets and the HVAC guy where you actually physically make stuff to 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 your business at the houses and the residential side, commercial, industrial as well. So I've always had the the thought of a sliding scale. If it went below twenty twenty hectares, what that would be. And, you know, throw that up there for now. The other thing, I think from the two hundred and fifty square meters, I think we have heard it from our public generally is that's that has been a sweet spot. Not the seven fifty, the two hundred and fifty seems to be working, especially if we have in our rural areas, maybe not so much in our ag lands, but in a rural, you have a mix. Because in a rural, you have a mix of residential, a lot more residential, because we allow severages in residential, right? So we have more of a mix of people. Right? And I'll give you an example of that. You know, south of Gray Road Four toward Badjols is ag lands. North of Highway Four is rural. And you see a difference in the makeup of the of the of the of the community. You may not have the same opportunity for those C fours. But I think on the other side is what we've been hearing is storage. And I raised this before, storage is not the manufacturing, but it depends what you're manufacturing, whether it's big stuff or small stuff, it affects your storage. I would like to see us have the conversation around increasing storage. Also, I've said this too, is tying it to our roads. And if we do make an increase, we have ability to collect money for our roads. And maybe we just do it and put it in there. Because that's the biggest thing that we have heard from like commercial activity is the roads. And we we know, we don't, the way it's set up now, we have no trigger to get any money for our roads. If you're setting up the way it's set up now, we have no trigger to get any money for our roads. If you're setting up uh an aggregate licensing system, or somebody's putting an aggregate um quarry gravel pit in, we have the mechanism to have a road use agreement to, you know, to collect and all. There was a lot of debate on that, whether they should just pay more per per yardage and then there's no more process. But that is a something that comes to mind where we have that, we can do that. Um, so
There is, there are development charges on that portion.
Not very much.
It it did say, I can't remember the numbers. It did say it in this in this paper.
Yeah, and that and that's there. And that and that that attaches, you know, but other municipalities, and we've been told this, and we've been told by a certain community group that, you know, there there is mechanisms that are paying for for road road, you know, um, because all of a sudden you're you're and we've heard that, we hear this over and over and over again is, well, it's a few trucks a week, but if the cumulative effect, you know, changes the our 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 rural roads, you know, and and you know, through our budget process, we have been going through and digging out or improving, you know, um, you know, adding two inch stone, building a lift, you know, we've been slowly doing that, you know, from the general uh taxation process. But I think, you know, if we can mirror the point of not increasing the shop size, but increasing storage size, but have that trigger. Um, you know, I think is 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 very key. I'll give you a small example of, you know, our our the C ADUs or the C fours. And I don't know if this would change that terminology from a C four to something else, and we've had that conversation as well. But, you know, we've had been been in place now for over twenty years. But I will say that um just as an example, I'm doing uh putting new steel on a roof and I had to go get some more material and it's a local C four that's providing that. And I asked a question yesterday. I said, are you buying Canadian material? Yes. I said, how are you affected by the terrorists? Yes. Uh, but he but because they're developing local and selling local, they're actually selling, we're buying Canadian. On that sense, there's a lot of, there's a lot of in depth to the C fours or the ADUs that are there and I maybe I maybe I shouldn't have gone that part, but I just wanted to share that as an example of me asking those questions. And I still have to work with the clerk in a in a process of setting up to have that tour. I haven't forgot about that, you know, we talked about that and seeing that. But but I think there's, I'm just going back to one of the issues that we go through is traffic and roads. And how can we try and other side is storage? So I don't know how we would word that. And and again, through a zoning bylaw, you have to have you know, that, you know, you're not increasing at a hundred fifty and all of a sudden you have four hundred square meters for 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 a shop. That's not what we want to do. It's storage. You still, your mandate would be the two fifty for your manufacturing or whatever you're doing. The hundred fifty or whatever that number would be. And I think it'd have to be a a sustant sizable amount. Because as we know, we have over three hundred in the in our municipality now. How can we trigger? And if if, you know, if they say hypothetically it was a number and you times that by three hundred plus the new ones that you add, that can add millions of dollars to our roads, which you go through a budget process, you know, and I think from my conversations I had, I don't think there would be an issue in the sense of doing it, if we're just developing the process that we all sort of all win win, we all that road. But I think in the sense of going back to the seven fifty and sure, you can go to Southgate. You know, and and I think it's been said that if you want a bigger shop, you don't go to Gray Highlands, you go somewhere else. And I think that that sort of has been in place. I think that has been a good thing, just from the sense of the balance out there. So just discussion?
Okay, so I found the spot. Thirty dollars and two cents per square meters is the development charge. The money collected is directed entirely to road upgrades. And so for a two hundred and fifty square meter shop, it's seventy five hundred dollars. If it was seven hundred and fifty square meters, it would be over twenty two thousand dollars.
Why not?
On page twen- thirty three of the two hundred and forty three. So you know I read at least thirty three pages.
That's even though the charge is probably anything. I have to go back to my, I just saw it last week on the accounts and okay, well, I'll have to verify that because I didn't realize that we're collecting, but maybe it could be increased anyway.
Yeah, so a question, the Mayor McQueen is suggesting larger storage. But the county official plan says seven hundred and fifty square meters. So, or, yeah, I don't think it, trying to remember if it's based on a percentage of the the lot area, so we can't be less restrictive. Ashley?
Yes, it's seven hundred and fifty. I'm just trying to pull up the county's official plan just to quote it directly. Because I want to make sure I get it right and not off the top of my head here. So I'm just going to pull it up quickly. Sorry, scrolling away. Who wrote this big document? The OFDU paper, there's so much information in that. Is there, sorry? There it is. Okay, so OFDU, where's my table eight? So for agricultural, there is no, it's the on farm diversified uses, twenty hectares or greater, you get two percent of the total size of the property or a maximum combined area of the use of eight thousand square meters. I believe, I don't think there is anything specific to seven hundred and fifty in the county OP, it being the local OP.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And there are some changes to the local official plan that were suggested in the OFDU paper in an attachment.
Good, thank you. Yep, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you very much, Chad. Sorry, Mayor McQueen, can I just ask for clarity on your comments, just what you just said there? You're suggesting the two hundred and fifty square meters is still is is good, but we want to increase the size of storage. And it was the increase in size of storage is what was going to trigger the change? Or are you suggesting that we did allow the shop size to be the seven hundred and fifty square meters? And that would that would trigger the change in in the assessment in the in the the DCs. Sorry, I was just trying to get clarity on what you were saying because I got lost there.
Something else, actually, just for clarity. And the the mayor touched on this, that the size of the shops isn't zoning. But you're suggesting, Ashley, that we do a official plan amendment alongside of this zoning review. And that's how we would
Yeah.
we would deal with that part. So as far as the zoning, it's more, do we allow it as of right? Or do we continue the way we are with having to do a a an amendment? So keep that in mind that the zoning is not the size.
Right.
Mayor McQueen?
Yeah, and that's what I was mentioning before. I know it has to be changed to the official plan in order to change that. But just just quickly going back to your page thirty four, it talks about taxes, but that doesn't talk about development charges or or a charge for the roads. That just says resulting in approximately seventy four hundred dollars in new tax revenue, which you probably because it's based on the one point eight. But from what I've seen in the an assessment, I've seen increases of only a hundred thousand dollars being assessed at. So I think we have to tease that out a little bit there.
It's on page thirty three.
Yeah, that's where I'm reading it. Oh, thirty.
The bottom of the first block. Additionally, the municipality of Gray Highlands charges development charges. It's act, it's page twenty two of the report, but thirty three of the whole package.
But then it pulls into the the development charge of a hundred eighty five per square foot. Is that for commercial, industrial?
We're not, you're not looking at the same.
It were the policy limits two fifty, yeah, I'm I'm at page thirty three. Up at page thirty three, we will go. Anyway, we'll come back to that part. I I I think I think that has to be teased out a bit more. So what I was saying, going back to what I was suggesting, was the two hundred and fifty is what we allow. We're not allowing, like, they'll go to the seven fifty. Seven fifty is overall size. We have to, we'd have to change our official plan that would spell out two hundred and fifty square meters plus an additional up to a hundred and fifty square meters for storage. And I think it had to be spelled out very clearly in the zoning bylaw, that it doesn't become four hundred square meters of manufacturing. Because then it'll be
Physical building can be with a four hundred square meters.
Your Deputy Mayor, we need to.
Sorry, Chair Allen, if I may then, what Mayor McQueen is suggesting is that the physical building where we currently limit to two hundred and fifty square meters could be allowed to be four hundred square meters total. However, the within that structure, one hundred and fifty square meters can only be used for storage.
Right.
That's helped me understand, like, I got lost with the way, yeah.
Because the seven hundred and fifty square meters is outdoor storage. It's not a building.
Yeah. Yeah, so so just to finish that, so then, so ju- ju- yeah, that was the biggest thing. And for example, yesterday, when I picked up some steel and stuff yesterday, the steel was all outside. Right? So steel's probably not a good thing to leave outside, but I I and I'm only using that as an example. And I I'm only saying a hundred and fifty because my point of a hundred and fifty, it has to be substantial enough to trigger a payment or 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 something for the roads. It has to be something that's you know, that's, you know, so how are that that's teased out or whatever? Because I've had these conversations and I think that, you know, if if they know, they can expand it. And with that, it's it's well worth. And we, on the other side, is we hear this, is because there is limited storage, that means the trucks have to come sooner and the material has to come sooner. If you have storage, you don't need as many trucks possibly on the road because it's some bigger trucks or however, right? It's it's not because I think we have heard it. And I think this is important, you know, having this conversation, then I can try to work out to get us maybe a couple tours this fall to see that physical stuff, to get a bit of a, you know, and I I'm only throwing this out for discussion. But but I, you know, I've had some conversations. I I just think that is, how do we get to that sweet spot? How do we get some money for our roads? How do we? How do we, you know, because that is what we've heard and and, you know, I know Dan, you live on some roads down there that have shops on it and stuff. I don't see it as much where I am at because they're just not over where I'm at, but they're all through our municipality, right? And we hear that and and, you know, that kind of stuff. So just high level, throw it out there, but they would have to be, whatever that storage would have to be spelled out in the zoning bylaw that it's storage, not manufacturing.
So the decision needs to be made whether we allow these as of right. If if we said that we would allow two hundred and fifty square meters as of right. And I think, I think maybe Ashley touched on this, that if they want larger, then we look at them through an amendment on a one on one or one, you know, one off decision. Doesn't mean everybody can get three hundred or five hundred square meters. But we look at them because there was that one that wanted to make grain bins. They needed more space. And there's a company down Highway Ten that makes trusses and you see all the trusses sitting outside. You know, if if they can make a case that they need more space, as the mayor said, my business, I needed a large shop. Another business could have a shop the size of this room and be fine, so. Counselor Dubic?
Yes, uh so so very good conversation. Um, I I I do wonder about it having sort of the, you know, as a right, the two fifty, um, you know, to me, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, you know, in terms of what we're seeing when those proposals do come in uh for review. Um, and so I think, you know, so I think that does help to just um streamline processes and um time for for everybody. Um, what what I do wonder, you know, about the, well, if it's, you know, if we do allow survey anything beyond that, um, you know, with a review, um, you know, where we may or may not allow it, it's it's the, well, it's it's those criteria of how we think about, well, when would we allow it versus not allow it? And and how do we be consistent in that in that approach? Um, you know, in terms of fairness. And 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 so that's the piece that I'm trying to wrap my head around is is how do we ensure we have some sort of standards? Um, if we were to allow beyond the two fifty.
I talked to the Deputy Mayor at Southgate and asked them if they approve as of right and they, she said no. But I think actually right this moment, Southgate is in a public meeting to allow them as of right. I was actually going to go, but um, I I see the time ten twenty six, we've been, we're halfway through. I think we should take a break. Um, so maybe till ten forty, does that work for everybody? So we'll take a a break till ten forty. Thank you.
Acres to hectares.
Okay, we're back from our break, and we were talking OFDUs. Mayor McQueen.
Well, hypothetically, what happens if we set as of right on uh, you have to have on ag, you have to have um a hundred acres, which is forty hectares. Or I think rural you can still have the same. As of right, it would be two hundred and fifty square meter manufacturing, a hundred and fifty meter storage, and a road pavement of twenty thousand dollars.
So again, we're getting into official plan here.
Okay, but but we have to make that amendment. So so this this is the big debate, Mr. Chair, we had when we were going through this back in seventeen, is the difference between ag and rural. But oh, you're coming back, good. So so so.
It's good to have.
The one question could be, uh, is is you get, you get the um, the full allowance on agricultural land. Where we ran into a little bit of stickiness was the rural designate lands, and that's really run into the conflict with residential or law creation, because you can't create laws on ag lands.
But you used to be able to.
Used to be able to, but not anymore. So there may be the odd lot out there.
Yeah.
But not like, like, and we're we're like, this is two thousand and five is when the provincial policy came in that said no more uh lots on agricultural lands. So that's been in place for twenty years. So we, you know, we're gonna keep moving ahead. So we can distinguish between ag lands and rural lands. What I'm saying is as of right, and I'm throwing it out for discussion, talk about the ag lands first. And I see there's a hand up, there's a hand up.
Ashley.
Yeah, so in terms of trying to just kind of make the best use of the time today with council, I'm just I like, I I don't think we need to focus on specifics about the policy, and so I I am having a rough number would be great. Uh, but in as the discussion unfolds, honestly, just some sort of general understanding that we're okay with an as of right um number in and around this, because it makes sense and and we can bring some policy back to you for review before we go to public meeting. Uh, versus trying to say, okay, it's gonna be two fifty and this much for storage. And it's like, I I don't want you to guys have to worry about trying to word this policy, because it's gonna take a long time to try to get it perfect. And I'm just like, I'm honestly taking all of the feedback and going to come up with something fantastic for you, so you can take a look at it later. Um, and the other side of things was the the comment regarding the ten thousand dollar like user charge for roads. That isn't something that we legally are allowed to do. So I just want to make that, you know, the idea that we charge a user fee for it. Uh, unfortunately, that isn't something that we're capable of actually legally implementing. So, yeah, I I just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, we're talking zoning bylaw.
There is a municipality down south that they charge road fees on their development. However, whatever, but what I'm saying is it's gotta be tied together, because if you're going down that road, we gotta put a big boy and girl pants on, because we went through the development charge. Now, you're only gonna be angry. We went through the development charge and we said we could come back and we couldn't implement on that. So we gotta come up with a mechanism to it. That's the only reason I would go down that road to go the hundred and fifty for storage, if there's a trigger. And I'm putting that out there right now.
Thank, thank you, Chair Allen, through you. Um, so the municipality in question has been contacted. They do not charge anything outside of their DCs. So their DCs may be higher, but that's based on the DC study, it's based on historic and it's based on growth, historic level of service and growth. So there is no arbitrary separate charge that is being imposed. And our treasurer got in touch with the treasurer at that specific municipality and got that information. We also brought it up during the DC study, and Hampson, who who provided us with with the study um also extensively uh researched this and can't find a mechanism to to have a separate charge. So we we asked them to focus on the DCs, they did focus on the DCs and came up with a charge that we can justify. But we can't charge something without having legislation to back up the charge and justification.
Maybe that increase amount is based on the size of the shop they have. So I don't want to. Because I don't want to get into a big discussion on that.
I I appreciate the comment, but we have to look at a mechanism, because when we developed the 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 wind energy policies and when we had, we charged so much specifically through our fees and charges, so much for uh for a building permit for, as said, and also for entrance permits, and we put in our fees and charges by law. So there there has to be a mechanism, because we did it there. And it and and today, it's thirty-five thousand dollars, you wish to build a new building, uh wind turbine? So all I'm saying is, is if it's specifically how you d- define it, we've done it.
Maybe that was actually a building permit fee, but anyways, uh, Counselor Alwood.
Thank you, Chair Allen, through you. So, I mean, what my understanding, what we're trying to do, that we have a draft um zoning bylaw attached to the report, that we're talking about presenting to the public at some point. And I thought today we were talking about, are we happy with the way it's written? So on on the subject of on farm diversified u- use, it does mention that the uh.
Sorry, what page are you on?
I'm on page one sixty-nine of the two hundred and forty-three. So it talks about on on farm diversified uses.
Okay.
It it says, uh, you know, twenty hectares or greater for all rural and agricultural zones. You've got the lesser of two, you know, the county rules, basically, as of right. Uh, I mean, the sense I get, in my, in my opinion, I, you know, I'd, I I think we have been and uh more restrictive with uh the two hundred and fifty square meters for the shop and the seven hundred and fifty square meters for outside storage, which is basically a thousand square meters, a quarter of an acre. So we're not really taking any land out of agriculture uh with those type of shops. It does does support agriculture and and generate tax revenue and DC charges that are put towards roads, as the chair pointed out. It also mentions, you know, less than twenty acres in agricultural zones, that you can have bed and breakfasts or home rural occupations, which uh within the dwelling, all other OFDUs are not permitted. And uh in the rural zones, it mentions that um, two percent of the total size of property, the lesser of, or maximum, so, you know, they are talking about in this draft, as presented, that in in a rural zone on less than twenty hectares, you could have two percent of the total size or less than two thousand square meters as an OFDU, so that's different than we've ever ever done. My other concern is primitive uses within the OFDU's. You know, I'm I'm involved with the multiple energy working, multiple municipal energy working group and wind turbines and battery energy storage systems are permitted as OFDU's, but not on agricultural, like ground mounted solar is solar, rather, is not permitted on ag land at all in in the new PPS. Uh, I think any any other use has to have a an agricultural impact assessment done before. And they they have to demonstrate that they looked at other locations before considering agricultural lands. So I'm not sure whether that needs to be in our in our zoning bylaw, or maybe Ashley could shed some light on that. I mean, another big concern we have with the larger, because I believe our zoning bylaw, the way I read it as it's presented, is only dealing with wind turbines less than three, um, sorry. I'm not sure if it's gigawatts or kilowatts, my mind just went blank, but the 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 smaller ones, the larger ones we're talking about. Um, you you're gonna have to have a uh a bylaw zoning amendment and it's it's not covered within the zoning bylaw, basically. It's gonna be dealt with separately. But setbacks aren't, you know, we we've argued for a a long time within that committee that the se- the current setbacks for those larger projects aren't adequate, and one of the ways to address those is in your zoning bylaw to require rather than blade length plus ten meters for setback from property lines that it's extended. And the other big issue is the uh setback for noise, which is five hundred and fifty meters in the current Oreg. Uh, which which is inadequate. Uh, we get lots of lots of complaints from our residents and uh there's been lots of studies that indicate that um, those setbacks aren't aren't adequate. The uh working group proposed at one time that the setback from any noise receptive be two thousand meters and that the setback for um um, property lines for things like blade failures and ice roads should be fifteen hundred meters. So I I'm not sure. Those are my concerns about uh, you know, the way we're progressing today, the the actual as of right sizes for those uh. What to use on ag and rural and again, the the concern about uh energy. I'll stop there.
Okay, deputy mayor. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Councillor Wakens.
Thank you and good morning. Um we're talking about the size of the OFDUs. We had an instance come up not long ago where uh. The folks wanted to manufacture grain bins. And uh. The shops really that we're allowing are not big enough. I wondered if there's any, are we gonna s- stick to that hard, fast two hundred and fifty square meters? Or would we make allowances for something like that?
That's what I was mentioning earlier, that if an option is to allow two hundred and fifty as of right, if they want to go any bigger, then it comes to a an amendment. But as councillor Dubic said, what criteria do we use to decide, yes, you can have it, but no, you can't?
When you're making something that takes up almost one thirty of floor space, I think that would, to me, that would make sense, but.
Can can we agree that we want to allow at a minimum? Two hundred and fifty square meters as of right, so it doesn't have to go through a zoning amendment? Both, the right now it's both. So basically what they can have now, we will allow as of right, based on the use. Has to fit into the policy. Sure, deputy mayor.
I would, so I like the the last sentence you said there, which is based on what exists now, then yes. And what exists now also includes the twenty hectares, right? So that's a another key component. We don't, I personally, I don't want to say two hundred and fifty square meter shop as of right. Without defining the size of the land, because the county policies allow for things. And in rural, as councillor was just pointing out, to be less than the twenty hectares. So if we stuck with the rules that are in, this is a question I was gonna have, the current official plan. If we are just to say that what exists in the current official plan becomes as of right in our zoning, does that actually require an official plan amendment? And I don't believe so, but I could be wrong.
Ashley.
Not necessarily, but there are different things in the language that I'd like to change in the official plan. I can do a full assessment based on that. Um currently, um it's two hundred and fifty square meters right now and seven hundred and fifty square meters for open storage is what's permitted. So if we're good with that being the as of right, I can look at the policy to see whether or not the change needs to take place. What I want to highlight is that the county is very specific. OFDUs are only permitted on properties above twenty hectares. So you weren't going to see a two hundred and fifty square meter OFDU with seven hundred and fifty storage in a category less than twenty acres on prime egg. So it's strictly for that twenty hectares and above. What I tried to do was create a home industry provision for anything less than twenty hectares. On agricultural land between five and twenty, that allows for a hundred square meters maximum. With no outdoor storage. So it's just you can have a shop that's no more than a hundred square meters from five to twenty. So that's a home industry defined separately, not OFDU.
Okay, just for clarity, though, also within the draft, though, it says that the we're allowing the OFDUs on rural zones less than the twenty hectares.
Yes, that's the county.
And I and from what I'm saying is, I don't know if we want to do less than twenty hectares.
Yeah, okay.
Two square meters as of right.
Okay.
Like that's where maybe an application is triggered. If you have the twenty hectares, Gray Highlands has recognized that two hundred and fifty square meters plus seven hundred and fifty square meters of storage. Is fine and well established. And if you're coming in with that criteria, you'll be as of rights, no zoning amendment required. Outside of that triggers the amendment, which allows for discussion at the council table as to whether or not councils are interested in allowing. Because of the size of the feed bin that we're trying to create or the the project or the amount of storage required as council, as Mayor McQueen has brought up. Given the st- style or type of manufacturing that's happening within that. But for clearly, what exists today on the twenty hectares in our official plan, as of right, makes a lot of sense to me. Because I do feel that we are um not being respectful of our staff's time in dealing with these applications. That are kind of continue, you know, cut and dry uh applications, as well as the proponents who are applying for them.
Okay. Follow up?
No follow up.
Okay, so on that topic, Mayor McQueen.
So I like the idea of a hundred meters under twenty hectares, because that could address the um. Could address the cabinet maker or the HVAC guy or whatever, that type of thing. So where I struggle. And I I guess the issue with the difference was from between rural and ag lands is is expanding the ability to expand. So, you know, as councillor Wickens said, if they have those bigger uh needs to have a larger shop. Would it not make sense that you could only expand those on ag lands, not rural lands? I always I look at the conflict on the rural lands. And you could have rural lands where you could have six houses down this road and all of a sudden there's a farm that's in rural. And you have a big shop and you got all these residents where you could have an agricultural. A piece of road that there's farm to farm to farm and you're not gonna have, and I'm looking at the conflict on the trucking, on the on the transportation part. So, you know, if and 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 it's been said, if if you want larger than two fifty, you go to Southgate. If you want to manufacture something bigger, you go somewhere else. So you 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 could work in there that there's options to what you want to make and you make those decisions too. Yeah, that's right. So I I'm a little bit struggling on the part of, okay, if it's two fifty across the board. And and rural, it's two fifty, no more. If you want to make possibility expand, but then you have to do the amendment, maybe, I don't know if you can write, you can only do amendment on 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 ag lands. I don't know. But I look at, I mean, the other argument, maybe they don't want to take more land away from agricultural land. But I look at it, it's more of a conflict with rural lands than it is ag lands.
Okay. Councillor Alwood.
Uh thank you, Chair Allen, for you. I mean, your argument about the, you know, the issue in rural and rural land can abut agricultural land and that on farm diversified use could be next door to those six houses on ag land. So, you know.
But you will have intensity agriculture in rural lands.
Again, I I I don't have any issues with as of right on uh properties that are twenty hectares or greater in rural and. Uh I, you know, I I think personally that the the way to approach this is to to allow it as of right. If we're happy with uh. You know, we're we're not talking about allowing stuff uh uh as it's written on that page that I mentioned, on page one sixty nine. The draft right now says that on less than twenty hectares in rural zones, you can have up to two thousand square meters or two percent of your property, whichever is less. Again, I don't think that should be as of right. I think that should be uh should come before council and Committee of Adjustment. So, you know, if you if you want to. Go bigger than the as of right, then then you make an application and go through the process. But, you know, in all the years I've been on council and committee of the adjustment. Uh I can't remember the last time we turned down a C four application. There is no C four anymore.
Yeah, it's not, it's not committee of adjustment. Let's do the planning.
Yeah, do the planning, sorry. Um, yeah, the minor variances, as we do. But sorry, so uh. Yeah, I I believe the as of right with the existing two fifty and seven hundred and fifty on rural and ag is is probably the way to go. And if we're talking about making changes to this draft, then I don't know how we give direction on that today, but.
Ballot, Mr. Chair. And this happened with the green bins. They felt that they had a forty hectares. So they thought they could go bigger than twenty hectares. I think we have to keep that in mind. Twenty hectares with two fifty. Eight or uh uh yeah, forty hectares. There's a difference in size. And and all of a sudden, you're gonna start seeing all these being split in half to get more two fifties. And I think we gotta be careful on that too. Because of right, you know, and then all of a sudden, we're 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 doubling up. I don't know that's where we want to go either. You know, maybe as upright, it's two fifty on a forty hectares. Maybe on twenty, it's not as a right. I don't know. I'm just saying is there's there's something, I think we need to have that further conversation. I see Joel has a question there too. Because all of a sudden, we get more, especially in rural. You get, I there's a, there's a, this is why we had this whole conversation back in two thousand and seventeen and we still didn't get anywhere. And that was official plan and review. Sorry.
Okay, so I'll go to councillor Lowhead.
Thanks, Chair Allen. So um first, I'd like to thank Ashley for the the very detailed and um and thoughtful uh plan that's been put together here. Um lots of really good information and um and I would say, you know, very few loose ends, um which is really, really nice to see. I think that the conversation we're having right now is best delayed until after uh we go to the public. I mean, that's sort of the way that this this plan has been put together and that's the that's the trajectory of this process. I mean, we're having a good discussion right now, but um really it depends upon, I think, what we hear from the people who this is gonna affect most. I mean, the way that it's presented to us today is is fairly compact and um and I would say, you know, good, definitely a good starting place. Um so I don't know that we need to deliberate on the details too much uh in committee as a whole. Um I'm willing to take it as presented to the public and hear back. Uh we can whittle it down further from there. Um but I think that um, you know, if there are objections, um let's hear them before we uh start to sort of, you know, borrow trouble. Um that's my uh my feeling at this moment.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Other comments, councillor Alwood?
Thank you, Chair Allen, through you. Ju- just as a follow up to that, I mean, we have been to the public and there's responses attached within this report uh on on the feedback we've gotten. So we've, Ashley's done a great job of uh consolidating that in her draft zoning by law. Um. Also considering comments from the county and other agencies, some of whom we're still waiting on, but uh. I I'm I'm not sure that we, I mean, I'm not. Sure that this council supports the way this draft is written right now, specifically OFDUs. But hopefully, we're gonna talk about height restrictions and maybe some development in recreational. Uh within Niagara scarban, you know, issues today, but uh. Um. I I don't have any issue with modifying the draft today before we go back to the public. Quite frankly, thank you.
Councillor Lowhead.
Sure, thank you, Chair Allen. Sorry, just as a follow up to that, I didn't mean in in general, no modifications to this draft as presented or this document as presented. I did mean specifically um in in regards to the OFDUs. And I know that the um Ashley's taken public uh input into account. And I I think that that's sort of my point is um we it it's incorporated here in the the document and um and in regards to that specific section of it. Um I'm I'm happy to go back to the public with it as written, but I'm also, you know. I I I am willing to entertain changes, of course. Um that was just sort of my my comment on that bit of it. And yeah, absolutely, there are other uh parts of the the document that we're yet to discuss. So um I'm I'm not suggesting that we sort of shut down the conversation at the moment. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the the last time we went to the public, this is, this is very, this is basically what the public saw. So. If I I think the public is going to think we're okay with this if we don't make any changes. And we won't, you don't hear things until you make a decision. So um I think we need to fine tune it a little bit on the more contentious issues, deputy mayor.
Thank you very much, Chair Allen. Um. Just a question for clarity on terms, trying to in my own mind, separate the conversation we're having on the zoning by law, which is what we're here for versus the official plan when it comes to OFDUs. Um there's a there, we're, we are having lots of talk on the size and scale and how it affects. And that, for clarity, should be more of an official plan discussion. Um however. When we're looking at the zoning by law, if we're looking at um. Limit like limitations on that side, how do they reflect? Like, what is the? The discussion we should be having when it comes to the zoning versus the what we keep adding in, what seems to be more of an official plan? Can you help me clarify where we should be targeting?
Yeah, certainly. The, so what I ended up doing right off the get go was actually introduce a um, what do you call it, a concurrent official plan amendment? Like a housekeeping amendment, recognizing that there was probably going to be some minor changes that happened or sometimes and sometimes major changes that happen. Uh with the zoning that will not match the policy of the official plan. So right off the get go, we said, okay, this is going to be a. A full new zoning by law update with a housekeeping official plan amendment in order to try to target these these nuances, I guess you could say. Uh so the conversation you're having right now is perfect. Like, there's no, there's, I don't think it needs to be specific to zoning. Because with OFDUs, you're going to see changes to policy in your OP, based on what I'm hearing. So I I I think it's fine, like the conversation you're having and the focus that you're you're you're, that you're, I guess, focused on. Um, right now, the way uh what I'm hearing and what I'm kind of taking back to the table to come, and I'm hoping maybe we can do. You know, one more little conversation as a group before we go to public, just to make sure I got it right. Uh but it's that seven hundred and fifty storage, the two fifty, exactly the way that you allow it right now, being as of right. And then some sort of criteria to help you guys um sort of assess. When an amendment and a sort of a larger scale uh OFDU would be permitted. And um what was the other one? On on was it the property size? No, sorry. It's just, so the like criteria established in the official plan that says when council is considering a rezoning application to or a. A minor variance for the size of this OFDU, here's the criteria that you need to consider. So that gives you a little bit of a checklist of, okay, you know what, if it meets this, then it can get rezoned. Uh just to help you guys out in those bigger decisions.
Deputy mayor.
Thank you very much for that, Ashley, and I do appreciate uh that helped me kind of narrow my own thoughts. One of the things I was wanting to um bring up is similar to what Mayor McQueen just and to what councillor Wickens has said earlier. If we are to consider larger scale operations, um. Is that something that is that something this council be interested in? One, and two. What is the land criteria? So so to what Mayor McQueen said, if somebody comes forward with a forty hectare parcel and does say, you know, we want a certain size shop. That's bigger than the two fifty. Is it something we would allow, right? Uh uh to what Ashley said, bring in some kind of a criterion checklist. But also, what would the maximum of that be? So within the current system, it's showing two percent of the total property size up to a combined maximum of eight thousand square meters. To me, that is too permissive. It 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 it, I don't wanna um. Risk having in our zoning by law, that size of a shop come in on a hundred acre parcel. Um and you see some significant operation that. Really, to me, again, kind of feels more like it should be in a different industrial park zone when you're getting to that scale of a shop. Um and so I do want to have, like, we've, I think we've we've established pretty clearly where our minimums are. Um but what is the the maximum scale and and, you know, the seven hundred and fifty square meter actual physical shop. Gets brought up a lot of times because of neighboring municipalities that are permissive and that seems to be their upper threshold. And if we're going to consider some kind of a checklist, I think the checklist should be a firm. You know, maybe we can consider something bigger, but if you're hitting anything larger than this scale, the answer is no.
So what I will just throw at council, and it's mostly just my nuance of like, put an asterisk on that, the answer is never no, there the appeal, the amendment process can happen regardless. Uh you can say no as a council, absolutely, but the OP will never be able to be, you know, so stringent that no one applies to try to fight it. So, yeah, I just wanted to kind of, yeah, okay, I understand where you're going with it and that could certainly be council at the table's decision. Uh but nothing will stop someone legally to apply for an amendment and try to prove that all the other criteria are met. Does that make sense? Okay.
So. I think I think we have agreed that if the application meets all the criteria of our existing official plan and zoning by law. That we will do that as of right. Is that? General consensus there? Okay, so. Well, right now it's twenty or more. All. And we're not seeing them severing. And we're not seeing them severing a forty hectare into two twenties. But I thought, Ashley, that that concern was brought up just a couple of meetings ago and the response from our another planner was that in the egg you cannot go less than forty hectares.
Yeah, I believe that there is a minimum requirement for lot area. I can't remember if recall if it's forty or twenty. I think it's forty. I think rule is twenty.
So that Sorry, okay, so that protects us there. So nothing will change. Right.
Rural's open season and that's where your conflict's going to come.
But it's there now and they're not doing it.
So just to highlight, the rural still has, so an OFDU in the rural still has to be secondary to a farm. Like, you can't just have industrial happen without the farmland. And just to highlight from a provincial policy standpoint, and I know this is probably not what Mayor McQueen wants to hear and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mc, or you're gonna, I'm gonna be in your bad books, but the 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 rural designations generally are more forgiving than the prime egg because the province is essentially trying to protect that prime egg, right? So generally, you would see more or less restrictive development in the rural area versus the prime egg. And but I completely understand where you're going with the fact that you have, you know, the ability to sever lots more so than in the prime eggs. You're seeing more residential development. That may not be compatible with these OFDUs. So I I completely understand where you're going with it. I get it. I just want to say, and it's not me making those decisions. This is the province, so we can take it up with them, not me. I'm just the bearer of bad news. That in the rural areas, generally, you see less restrictive development rules than you would in the prime egg.
Mayor McQueen?
So my point is, yeah, you do allow them in agricultural lands, but he said the minimum size is a hundred. Just had in the spring, we had a huge discussion around one right beside Brewster's Lake. Now Brewster's Lake is, but it's a rural subdivision, but it is a rural area and that conflict came up. And this is what I'm saying is, is you have it as a right. There's, I I think if you have it in the egg lands, okay, you aren't going to have the same receptors. But in rural lands, you're going to have all kinds of of of, and and if they have to do the amendment in the egg or in the rural lands, then you will address those issues. Where if it says a right, you're not going to address those issues. And you're gonna, we're gonna get, I think it will get huge pushback on if it's in the, I understand with regards that they don't want to take any more land out of egg lands. But I think it's backwards because like you can have intensive agriculture, you can put hog barns and all that stuff in agricultural lands, but you can't do it on rural lands. Why? It's because of the receptors. And I think it's the same idea with the ADUs. You're going to have more receptors in the rural lands, especially if you can go down as small as as four, twenty hectares. I don't like, I I think you're really, you're really, you know, if you have to go through a process on 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 rural lands, you're going to address if they, those issues are there. If they're not there, you still go through the process. They can be allowed. But your your setbacks are shorter.
So twenty hectares, that's that's fifty acres, a pretty big farm. Is there, Ashley, can we put in setbacks from the C four zoned area to
neighboring residential uses or non-compatible? Yeah. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the Ministry of Environmental, Environment Conservation and Parks have noise guidelines as well that we need to make sure we're keeping an eye on. So that gets assessed automatically at our end and it will be part of the OP policy is something that we need to look at to trigger anybody in the future. But if, let's say, an industrial development is being proposed, we are instantly looking at the noise receptors. So like, if it's going to be something that's triggering a lot of noise, there's a certain distance that you have to be from adjacent uses that are non-compatible. So we are factoring that in already in the decision making. And I want to say again that the the idea here is because you're not going through a zoning amendment, I want you to all understand that 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 doesn't mean no municipal oversight. It still needs like plant control. It still needs building permit. If it can't meet those noise guidelines from MCP, they're not going to be able to move forward without a noise study. And then us, you know, having some conversation back and forth and potentially coming to you guys for decision making on it. So there, that setback's already there technically with those guidelines.
But it's not much of a setback.
Seventy, I think, if it's
Seventy meters.
One, and then there's like, there's three different industrial classifications. I think the biggest one is three hun, no, a thousand meters. I think it's seventy meters, three hundred meters, and then the thousand meters.
But could we put our own setbacks in there?
Yeah.
We say each C four zoned area has to be a thousand meters from a sensitive receptor. So there's Mayor McQueen?
I think this this council needs to have a map and look at the rural lands and egg lands and get a better understanding of what is in those rural or egg or in those rural lands to see the receptors that are there. I mean, the other thing is you could buy a hundred acres of of rural land and divide it in half. And you're giving that as a right. And then you're you're just causing conflict. Like, I just don't know how else to describe it if it's as a right and and you you need to, and and because the policies of today still allow rural severances in those rural lands and you have a right, you're just creating, because why, why do they not have intensive agriculture in rural lands? Because it's about the receptors.
But my question then to you, Mayor McQueen, is for the last twenty four years, twenty five years, they've, a C four is what it used to be called, was allowed on twenty hectares. So what, I I guess my question is why the sudden worry that, because if somebody has forty hectares of of rural land, they can sever it and we can't say no because you might put a shop on it.
My point is, it's not a right. They can still go through the process.
But have we ever turned one down?
Well, we've had to do changes with regards to receptors.
Well, and that's where the setback that I was asking about
It's not appealable. It's not, it's just anyway, I I just, I I view my opinion.
Yeah.
And I, from from all the years of of hearing, you know, and and that and and seeing the the potential and also is I'm not saying it can't happen. I just don't see it. It should be as a right because I've, we've heard some of that from the people that have been speaking is is the conflict around the residential and the C four. You got more people living in a certain particular road, you're going to have more possibility.
Okay, so then can we, I'm assuming we can put as of right on forty hectares or more and under forty hectares, we have, they have to go through an amendment?
Could be one way. What you're saying, that's a saw off on the on the rule. You're working on me, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Mayor?
Think about that.
Thank you very much Chair. So I I guess a comment to your position, Mayor McQueen, is that perception and reality are two different things. And so we have residents who come forward with a perception of what a C four means, what it will bring, what it will do to their quality of life on their property versus the reality of what happens once the C fours are actually in place. And the reason for as of right to to allow the as of right is taking into consideration the history of conflict post C four presence. We have lots of residents that come forward with concerns before C four is constructed. I don't think I can count on my hand the number of complaints I've had once it's been constructed. Once it's actually in place, once people are living beside it and they realize, oh, I can't actually hear the generator that's running. I don't hear the mill that's running. I don't hear the machinery that's running. Yes, there's a few extra trucks on my road. And so part of having as of right allows for applicants and landowners the ability to to build on their land without the stress and pressure of conflict of without the lack of a better word, nimbyism of saying, I don't want that beside me. That's great. They can build a C four shop or sorry, non-farm diversified use just as long as it's not beside me. And I think that's where the limitations that exist now, what they're allowed to build a C four shop, what's the distances and setbacks, what's the system that we've been using where we haven't had post construction conflicts to me shows historical signs that as of right makes sense. If the shop does not meet the criteria that exists today, then we don't know what potential conflicts could arise from a larger scale shop. We don't know what conflicts could arise from uh, more truck traffic or perhaps it's less truck traffic, but the trucks are heavier because they're hauling more material in one haulage versus a second. And so that's where we're saying, if you're wanting different than what exists now, you cannot do it as of right. We want to have an opportunity to see what the conflicts could be, what the negative prospects are. So that's kind of how I'm reviewing what we're, the discussion we're having and why I'm comfortable with going as of right because we do have the fifteen years at least of history showing, I just, I haven't seen the conflicts post-construction.
So follow up, fifteen years ago, the C fours in Osprey and Artemisia, there were people in here complaining. But that's gone away unless 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 you get into something like Brewster Lake. Now we're seeing the C four applications up in Euphrasia and people are coming. But I agree that it, I know it, once they realize that it's not the issue they think it is, we probably won't.
My point, Mr. Chair, is conflict. You would not, and we've heard the points of industrial, commercial development beside residential. You wouldn't put industrial, commercial lands in an urban area beside an urban setting. So we still have the policy, and this is when you talk about official plan, we talked about this three, four years ago of doing an official plan review to match the county and that's on on consents and other things that we were supposed to do, but we never got there. So, you know, you're talking about doing an amendment to serve our official plan to serve one thing, but there's other things that we've talked about. But on that is you have the potential on 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 a hundred acre rural to put two severances that are already there. Truck traffic and and residential, kids on the road playing does not make sense if we have an opportunity to say, uh, as a right on egg, but as a right on 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 rural, there's other uses happening in those and and that residential land, rural lands. It's called people living, people on bikes, people on roads, people coming and going and stuff like that. I'm just saying in a sense, from a, from a, from a hypothetical, you're causing conflict. Because there's the ability to have more than just one person on a hundred acre farm, like one house you can have. And then with ADUs as well, you're going to add that as well. All I'm saying is is I don't think it should be as a right on the on the rural lands. That's what I'm saying, because there is a conflict that can be there, whether that's being raised or not, but you have more people. On agricultural lands in two thousand and five, rural severances were stopped unless it's the surplus farm doing. I'm just saying from a, from a hypothetical staying point of planning, try to avoid conflict. That's what's coming.
So if we say that if it meets today's criteria and it's forty hectares or more as of right, if it's less than, if it's between twenty and forty, twenty and thirty nine, twenty and forty hectares, you have to go through a an amendment that gives us some the the ability to put in restrictions, whether it's setbacks or buffering or whatever it is. And this isn't this isn't the final version.
It's public.
We, it goes back to the public hearing and we'll get feedback.
Exactly.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Just one final comment I made and I I would like to carry, I'm playing devil's advocate with Mayor with Mayor McQueen, just trying to flush out and fully understand. One comment we hear from residents is why have a public meeting if you're not going to listen to me? And so if the premise is, we want to allow residents to come and to to state their concerns and their grievances or their their frustrations or whatever it may be. And we always ninety nine percent of the time, I believe the report even says ninety eight percent of the time, approve is the, is the, where does the frustration come in from the residents? So as of right means somebody just gets to start construction in the neighbor's ability. What are they building? That looks like a shop. Well, the shops look very much like agricultural buildings stylized for a reason. But if we let residents come in and time and time again, the bigger criticism I get is, what's the point of this meeting? You're not even going to listen to us. What's the point of me coming here? What's the point of this? And so we're saying, we want to continue that process where people can come in and make comments, but we have consistently followed the policies that exist and have allowed them to go. And 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 I think just from my own self and and Mayor McQueen, again, I'm just playing devil's advocate that that conflict exists too. And I'm 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 challenged to say, you know, that conflict is is any less. I hear more emails from what, you don't even listen to us, you don't care, you don't pay attention or or such when we're going to follow the policies that exist because they exist for a reason.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Allwood?
Thank you. Good discussions. The through you, the I mean, I think the thing we have to remember here is that to have an OFDU on rural lands, twenty hectares and above, you've got to be actively farming. The same people that are living in residential rural lots on the small lots, the the people that complain, in my experience, have been people that aren't used to living or grew up in an agricultural area. They're going to complain about the farm traffic. They're going to complain about the manure spread going down the road. They're going to complain about the grain trucks parking on the side of the road and the combines coming now. The same kind of issues, Paul, Mayor McQueen rather, the it's, it's, you know, they have this expectation that they're buying a little piece of rural Ontario where life is quiet and I can listen to the birds sing. Well, they're living in an agricultural area. Grey Highlands is primarily an agricultural area. And, you know, these OFDUs and you farm, I mean, the, you can only have enough OFDU if you're farming on those rural lots. You know, that's the 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 guys that complain are yeah, I mean, it's or that's that's, you know, and I'm not saying we're going to ignore those people. We're going to listen to them. If their complaints are valid, deal with it. But you you get a lot of people complaining. It's nimbyism, as Deputy Mayor said. But I'm hoping that we can, you know, we've had a long discussion on OFDUs. The 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 edit on page one forty five has struck all the permitted uses from the zoning by law because those permitted uses are as described in the local planning. Uh, so sorry, the local official plan. The other issue, so I guess we will be looking at our local official plan to making sure that we're okay with permitted uses on OFDUs because that has come up on a number of occasions. Maybe Ashley could speak to that.
Yeah, so the way that it's worded right now is it'll match the local OP and then the local OP matches the county. So whatever the county is listed as permitted uses is what I put in as permitted uses for Grey Highlands. Certainly can have the discussion if there's, you know, certain ones we want to perhaps force through zoning versus some that are as of right. We could definitely look at doing that. So, I mean, they're permitted, but you need to go through a process if it's a certain amount of uses. I'm fine with that too. So we can take a look at that if you'd like.
Councillor Wiggins?
Thank you Chair Allen. I have a couple of questions for Ashley. So in the zoning for A one, it allows intensive agricultural uses and A two and rural does not allow intensive agriculture and I cannot find a definition for intensive agriculture.
Uh, it wasn't in the definitions section? Did I not add that in there?
No, it's not.
Okay, so I might could probably add one in. It's, I believe it's in the county as well, the county OP. Just give me a second. Two new files open here.
I think it's based on the number of head of cattle or something, is that true?
It's not in the county either. Um, I know that they had, they define it provincially as well, so I can make sure that that gets added though.
Yeah, it's just, it's not in the definitions. And how do you differ from rural to agriculture? How? How how do we uh make that difference?
So essentially, the only difference is that what the province classifies as prime agricultural land. So if the if the province has identified it as between class one and class three lands, it's prime egg. And anything that's within Grey Highlands that's zoned A one or A two is considered prime agricultural land. The rural does have would have um either class four or above. Uh, I think it's class four to class seven. So, yeah.
If you want to call you, I'm going to call you out in that one, because the county, the county map is already determined back in nineteen ninety eight rural and egg lands. We don't go by classes. It's already determined in the in the county's map with the rural and egg. So so uh south of highway four is a lot of it's rural or egg, north of highway four could be of the same soil, but it's already mapped. Because it happened in nineteen ninety eight at the county, that that agricultural and and rural has already been mapped out. Nothing has changed. So when we go to mapping, we we're not going to the province and say this has certain classes. It's already mapped out.
I I want to see the, I really want to see these maps because as Paul said, uh. Something rural, like if it's a stone pile, and we all know it's a stone pile, okay, fine, but. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Counselor Alwood.
Uh, thank you, Chair Allen, through you. Just on page one twenty nine, there is some talk of agricultural uses in the definitions there. Basically, it talks about concentrated animal feeding operations.
So you read through at least a hundred and twenty nine?
Uh, I read through all of it. I should have written down some page numbers.
Yeah, intensive uses is defined. It's agricultural uses and then intensive is it is in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I was hoping we could move on to maybe uh. Rural residential multiple height restrictions and talk about that today.
Have we have we come to a kind of a conclusion here? Deputy Mayor?
I believe Ashley probably has a full page worth of notes on OFDUs and we'll see what she comes back with before the public meeting.
Okay, all right. Counselor Dubic?
Yeah, so so just one quick question, uh, just one quick comment is, you know, when we do talk about the twenty hectares to less than forty hectares. Um, you know, I I I, if we don't include that as as of right, um, I do wonder, you know, if we can start. It to me, it's a little bit about like, you know, how do you codify it, right, in terms of it's acceptable? Um, because I I I do wonder if we can get to um as of rate, if we codify it appropriately with with concerns. But I'll I'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right, so moving on to another topic, Counselor Alwood.
Uh, yeah, I forgot what page it was on now, but the height restrictions in the. Obviously, the Markdale Development Group's got the. A concept that's been presented and vetted with the public um that that talks about, I just wanted to make sure that we're. Capturing that in the zoning bylaw. Revision. And I'm having trouble with converting meters to stories. This is all, it all talks about heights and meters and uh. Um, we're all talking about three, four, five, six story buildings and apartment buildings and. Uh, and and having a concept of uh. Not having those higher, if it's in the downtown core, not having those higher heights right on the curb side that setback. So uh, it I just, it'll take me a second to find the right page, but. Um, if we could.
Twenty meters is to clarify six stories, just to give that context.
Yeah, twenty meters is six stories.
Yeah.
Twenty meters is six stories, okay.
So so you're talking about the downtown commercial zone and the multiple residential?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Downtown and then the apartment buildings. The proposed apartment building and the one that's in in the works. Was the RM residential multiple.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was more concerned about, you know, those those two apartment buildings. We've had some discussion in council right now. And certainly we've approved the principle, the six story uh, subject to some, yep. But the uh downtown development, um, you know, the concept that was presented by that group. And uh, which basically aligned with the public um information gathering process. We went through with the planning partnership, does talk about some density downtown and and some height. And so, I mean, I I would hope that we, uh, if we're looking at our bylaw zoning, that. It allows that sort of density in our downtown area.
Density and height?
Height, yeah.
Height.
Height to to achieve the density that you need to get to, you know, make it, one, to. Create the housing units that the province wants and two, to make the project economically viable.
Yes, the question for our CAO. There's been no application for the downtown property. There were concepts. Are we? We're not obligated to put into our new zoning bylaw the concepts. Um, it's going to have to be rezoned anyways, probably, so just have a comment there, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair Allen, through you. Um, there is mention of it in the agreement that council will support going up to. But that doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be changed in zoning. It just means that. Uh, when the application comes through, that the intent is that council will support up to six stories.
Right. So we don't necessarily need to have it in our.
But there is, there is something in this draft that mentions height. In maybe, I guess it would be the McHughes commercial C three zone and also. Our end zone, yes, you know, yeah. Which is on page. One hundred and page. One ten. Oh, that may not be able to report on that. Yeah, that's where it gets confusing.
Counselor Dubic.
Uh, thank you. And and to that uh point, um, you know, Ashley did mention and and talked about the the step back. Um, you know, if we were to preserve um some of that rural character. And if we wanted to um ensure um, you help us call it, you know, um. Shadows and sightlines, et cetera. Uh, so. I'm in support of, you know, sort of including that and just kind of wondering, um, maybe a question to Ashley. Um, how how does that get included, um, given the fact that, you know, we do have. A certain or certain um development, downtown development already in in the hands of a developer. Um, and so could you just um add a little bit more? Color and clarity around that, uh, because the the concept of, you know, going up to six with. Step back, I think it is um is very favorable in 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 my perspective. Thank you.
Ashley.
Thank you. So there's the multiple reasons why I went with the six story. One is because I knew that there was local uh. I I guess local interest in doing that with a couple of applications that have come forward. Second was because in my dealings with other municipalities. Generally, when you're developing something on a small parcel fabric, you need to go at least up to six in order to make the performer work. Uh, and then, you know, thinking about Markdale having been there, I mean, six stories is going to look like kind of like a sore thumb. Given what your current height is, right? And so in order to preserve that small town feel, the step back just seemed like an logical way to move forward. When it comes to applications that have already been submitted, it depends on when that zoning bylaw amendment application gets submitted. Into in terms of which policies they're going to have to meet. So let's say hypothetically speaking, the step back and the height. Get adopted and there's no appeals to the zoning bylaw and then the application comes forward. If they don't have step up, they're going to have to get an amendment uh to recognize that. And it'll get evaluated based on the policies that you have in front of you once it's adopted. So, I mean, there was obviously some leeway that happens, um, because you're dealing with an old when you're creating the entire proposal and then. So it it'll it'll have to come up to council and get discussed likely. Um, um, there's always a little bit of wiggle room when we're kind of shifting between the two. I should also mention that uh council does have a provincial planning through the Planning Act will actually say. That when a new zoning bylaw comes into effect, there's two years where you're not allowed to do amendments. Uh, automatically, it's like provincially, they say you're not allowed to amend the the zoning bylaw for two more years. Uh, council has the ability to remake that and just pass a resolution saying we are willing to accept. Planning applications um based on certain criteria, if you want, or just carte blanche, allow zoning amendments to happen. Um, within that tier timeframe, but I just wanted to make sure that council's aware of that too. And I'll I'll mention it again once we get closer to the adoption process. As to which way we want to go with council.
Counselor Alwood.
So, uh, as far as the mixed use C three zone goes on page two two twenty of the report, it just mentions maximum height twenty meters. Which is six stories, right? It doesn't, it doesn't deal with the fact that we conceptually or as a council have sort of talked about stepping that up and not allowing it. Uh, you know, on our sidewalks.
Yeah, so in the general, I'm trying to find the page number, in the general regulations, there is a requirement for, so. Every height would be subject to the step up provision above three stories, I think I said.
Right.
So it just, it triggers going to general provisions and then there's a step back requirement that everyone would have to follow.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor McQueen.
I certainly support the six stories as as Counselor Alwood says, we sort of have done an amendment on that already. I think in the sense of our property that we just typically technically sold, Mr. Chair, I think if we're, if it only. Were on that specific property, but I think if it's the whole downtown core, then it's in general, it's it's not as particular to that, but it's. You know, we're not being specific to that property. It's it's the footprint of the downtown core that I think, I personally think that we. We're just looking at the interest of the downtown core, not to that. Does that make sense? I mean, if we were specific to a property. Because of what you just spoke about, now, I know we're looking at changing the hospital property as well, because that sort of makes sense. It's no longer a hospital. From a, from a different zoning, but I think if 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 we're going to look at a certain rise and maybe what we say is it's a step back from a certain block area. And that's what we 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 put move forward with. It's not, it's not specific.
No, no, it's the whole, that whole zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not site specific.
No, and I think that's where we're okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, can I just jump in here quickly?
Sure.
Uh, so the page number is one seventy seven, if you wanted to take a look at the actual way the provision's written. And in here, uh, the application is for the downtown commercial and mixed use zone only, so I didn't put it on the high density residential. Um, again, mostly because we're trying to just target it in that downtown core area. Uh, certainly we can change that if you'd like, but it would be applicable to that entire, those two entire zones. And it would only be applicable after the third story, so eleven meters.
So right at the road, they could have three stories and then a gradual step back to six or an immediate?
It would be, so three stories would be at the at the, I guess, the front lot line and then you'd step back and go up for the remainder of the three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two point five meters, step back.
Mm hmm.
From the front lot line.
Mm hmm.
It's not a lot.
No, it's not. Yeah, well.
Six. Eight feet.
But in the context of the size of a lot in the downtown core. You probably only have about, like, how much depth do you think you have there? About a hundred feet?
Well, in the particular lot we're talking about.
Okay.
Way more than a hundred feet, but.
Okay, so then maybe it would make sense for that site specific example.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah. But if we put this in, then that's what they can go by, so we need to watch that.
Okay.
Maybe a step back based on a percentage of the depth of the lot or something like that. But that's something we can work out.
Sure.
Okay. Any more on height? Are we okay on height? All right, anything else? Other topics? Parking, anything like that?
We're parking it in there.
Yeah, parking's in there, reducing, which we've done on the apartment building from one point two five to one.
It said visitor point two five, I think it said, I saw on there.
Forget what page that was on now, but.
I do have one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Campers trailers, and I don't, I have looked through it where it is. Like, I was thinking about this the other day, and I know it's an according zone by law that you can only store your camper trailer on your property. But uh, you know, people enjoy their trailers. They may have a weekend get together and stuff like that. Trailers today are a lot different than they were probably forty years ago in the sense of, you know, safety and quality and stuff like that. I don't know what would be the difference of of hauling a trailer to a campsite. On a a weekend or having people over on your property on a weekend. I can see the part of a permanency. And if they're permanently, then it's different. You're hooking in and you, what are you doing? Receptacle, you have to go through a process. But and I think Counsel Wiggins maybe raised this to Ashley too, I think.
I'm not putting words in your mouth, Counsel.
Yeah, so have we, do we need discussion around that? Or what what's the thoughts on that in the sense? Because currently, right now, you have. A trailer, you have some friends over, you're in violation. Through our current zoning bylaw. So. I think, you know, I mean. I I think it's, I I don't, I I think there should be some flexibility there, not in the permanency, but good gosh, if you're having a few people over and you're. Having a get together. In today's day, young people don't drive, they take a trailer and they stay.
Right, okay.
I think that's a good thing.
Let's go to Ashley and.
Thank you. Yeah, so I did actually respond to this via email, but for the sake of the public, just to try to give it some context. Uh, the the idea with zoning is I really, really don't want to get into, I would caution you against trying to. Uh, figure out uses that are temporary in nature. It makes it a bit difficult to try to enforce. Uh, I think what we did provide as a potential option for that specific scenario, Mayor McQueen. Is the introduction of a recreational vehicle bylaw outside of zoning or like a camping and trailer bylaw that allows you to have like special events permits. Uh, to do it. And you're exactly right, you hit the, you hit it on the the head when it comes to having a trailer there full time, obviously has environmental. Concerns that we need to be cognizant of. So what I would recommend is that you leave it outside of zoning and you put it into this recreational vehicle bylaw. And that's something we can, we can tackle at any point.
Go ahead.
So, okay, so let me just get this right. So basically, if you're having a rural piece of property and you're having. That people have a trailer there for the season, you need a permit. Is that what I'm reading?
So again, I, if you're doing it for a season, that might again be, I was thinking it's more like you're having company over for a family reunion. I am a hundred.
Nobody's going to do that. They're just going to hook the trailer over, go over to friends, stay the night and come home.
I think, I think Ashley's saying if people are there for the weekend, they don't need a permit. Is that right?
Well, yeah, so you can do it, but you can do it one way or the other. The zoning wouldn't, you wouldn't get into zoning if it's only there for the weekend. Because by the time I, like, we go to enforce it, it's going to be gone. Um, and to me, it doesn't make sense to have that in the zoning bylaw. Uh, where we would have issues this, you know, a trailer being the prime use on a property or even as a.
Okay, yeah, prime use, but you may leave your trailer at your buddy's for the summer and you may come up on weekends. I I guess where is the point, or or all of a sudden people say, oh, there's a trailer camp site there and, you know. But every weekend they have their friends over and they have trailers and they go home or they leave them there for the summer or like the the. There's a lot of, a lot, a lot of people have trailers.
CEO got it.
Thank you, Chair Allen, through you. Um, I think what Planner Billado is saying is. It's not a zoning issue. You just need to enact a bylaw to do what council feels is appropriate. So it's a totally separate thing outside of zoning.
Well, the complaint we got, it became a zoning bylaw issue of trailers parked on a property.
If it's a permanent situation, but I think the example was given that if somebody was at an overnight event. Um, they take trailers and and want want to be able to legally camp overnight. Um, council can just pass its own bylaw saying that that's permitted if if that's what council wants to do. You don't have to address it in the zoning bylaw. That the zoning by law is talking about more permanent situations.
Okay, so you may for the weekend, but you may leave your trailer at your buddy's all summer. And it's not, you may come up on a Tuesday, you may come up on a Wednesday, you may come up on a Friday, who knows? The other part is, is people do have rural property that they do have, leave a trailer on that maybe recreationally they come up and stay overnight, I don't know. It's, it's when it becomes that, that's the residence on that, and it's like hooked into a well and hooked into a septic and all that kind of stuff, but I, it just you know, we see it, it's only based on complaint, it's all over the place. People are doing it all over the place, it's just if somebody complains about it, and then by law have to, have to come along, and that's what I'm saying is where do we really want to enforce and, and pay our bylaw enforcement people to be there, or is there, is there like the hard and fast thing that we want them to be doing? I guess that's where it is. So I don't know, I don't know if Counselor Wiggins has any further, it just it's a lot of it, a lot of it's complaint base that comes up. Yeah, but it, it's a particular one, it goes back to zoning and fire and a lot of things. And, and smoke alarms and all this kind of stuff, but trailers today, you know, they have a smoke alarm on them, right, or a, or a, or a, um, carbon monoxide detector and stuff like that, but we get drawn into it.
Okay. Other topics, Counselor Dubic? Oh, sorry, Ashley.
Thank you. So what I would highlight is if there is an intention to allow like one more, um, recreational trailer that is to be used uh, for seasonal basis, that is something that you should have in your bylaw. Uh, so it, I, I don't necessarily agree with them, because, because there are so many self, safety concerns. Um, but if you are thinking about going that route to legalize somebody who has parked it on a friend's property and they plan on using it, uh, recreationally for a full season and keep it there yearly, then I think that is something that needs to be reflected in the zoning by law, so I would, if you're going to do it, I'd max it out at one, so it doesn't become a a full blown park, because there'd be different rules with the park. Um, but yeah, certainly, just to the point that that would be something I capture in a zoning by law. If you're just doing it for special events, then I wouldn't, but if it's we're gonna all of a sudden allow a recreational vehicle on a rural piece of property for a season, yes, that needs to be included.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to do that, because people will
Yeah.
though, there's a way around bylaws, they'll park it on Dan's property for one season and then they'll move on to your property, Paul, and it'll be a permanent thing, but just on a different property, I think. I think we just leave it alone, like, people come up, they're having a wedding, there's eight trailers in the backyard on a, you know, a large piece of property. They stay for the weekend, they go home.
I, I guess the last comment is, is if it becomes an enforcement issue, what's the difference of the trailer if they went to a park versus somebody's farm, it's the same thing if the trailer on safety, whether you have a smoke alarm or a carbon monoxide detector or whatever. You're, you buy these, you buy these trailers and you pay twenty to forty or fifty thousand dollars on these trailers. It's like, they're not like something, somebody pound together and it looks like, you know, I mean, they're, they're all over the place, so, anyway.
Any other topics? Counselor Dubic.
Uh, thank you, I, I'd like to test out a concept here. Um, so when we talk about open spaces, um, there's a list of sort of what open spaces means. And within that is, um, conservation, so you know, kind of like the passive open spaces of, you know, conservation, forestry and wild, wildlife areas. I'm wondering if, um, if it, if there may be merit to tease that out, you know, from the open spaces as a separate zoning, um, there, there's you know, in our community, there is more, more and more conversations and interest about, you know, and, and, and understanding about the importance of, uh, green corridors, um, you know, for wildlife passages, um, and, you know, and for healthy ecosystems and diversity and and that also, you know, you know, the health of that is also um, tightly woven into human health as well. And so wondering if it, it, you know, if, if there, if it may make sense to kind of tease that as, as a separate zoning, so that we can then be more thoughtful and more focused on where, you know, where we do have those green corridors um, sort of laid out. Um, I, I would love to hear Ashley's thoughts on that.
Ashley, your thoughts?
Maybe a question for clarification. So the, uh, when you say green corridors, are you thinking like for habitat, like significant habitat to walk through, or more so for residents, like?
Um, so yes, so I would think like, you know, so green corridors where, you know, it's kind of like the, um, you know, w- wildlife.
Yeah.
Uh, and also it, it could be passive. It could be like passive trails, uh, for, you know, for, for humans as well. But, you know, but I think it's, it's different than, say, um, ski resorts or, or golf courses, you know, I, I think those are very kind of different. And so, um, just, yeah, just wondering if, um, you know, there's just, I, I just feel like in the community, there's more conversations around that.
Sure.
Um, about the um, ensuring that, you know, as we continue to develop, it's also the, the, um, you know, where are we continuing to conserve?
Mm hmm.
Um, because there is a very important balance, especially, you know, with climate change and we were seeing, um, you know, being able to weather through, uh, more extreme weather patterns, et cetera. Um, you know, having, you know, some, you know, sort of this sort of separate zone that's, you know, specifically outlined, um, then sort of helps to keep us in check of where we're developing versus where are really precious, um, sensitive lands that we don't want to um, you know, see golf courses or, or whatever else that may be.
Okay.
Nope, that's fair. So what I'll say is that the province has significant habitat mapping or significant woodlands mapping. And generally what that is, is, you know, where all of the nature is, and it sort of weaves through to make sure that there's this continuous ability uh, to, for animals to be able to get to and from where their habitats are. So that is already protected, I believe in your EP, um, and if not with a holding provision uh, for significant habitat or woodlands, significant woodlands. So that'll be different than the open space piece, but I, what I'm going to say is let me look into it, because I think it's just a matter of, let, let me wrap around how I can make that work, like, and again, I can understand the difference between a golf course or a, an active playground versus, you know, this is a, a, a conserve, a conservation or a, a piece of, of the land that we want to make sure we're conserving for future and having more strict regulations on those versus the, uh, the more active parcels. I, I'll look into that one.
All right, thank you. I think Counselor Alwood had his hand up.
Yeah, I mean, there was a, a lot of changes proposed under the recreational resort zone, section fifteen on page three, uh, two thirty four. Just wondered what, whether some discussion on that might be good today.
Counselor Dubic?
Yeah, so, so exactly, because like within there, you know, you're, you're capturing like, you know, wildlife areas and conservation areas, right, so again, um, you know, along with resorts and hotels and then breakfasts and things, right, so, so it's the, you know, it's the, this passive, you know, kind of these passive corridors, I'm wondering if we can sort of tease that out uh, as opposed to letting it sit within that list.
Okay, yeah. Go ahead.
So, sorry, within the permitted uses outside of the prominent escarpment slope is, is specifically a passive open space area of conservation, forestry and wildlife management practices.
Are you just thinking you want it defined a better, a little bit better?
So, so, so that's exactly it, so, so it's about taking that and defining it separately than open space.
Okay.
Right, so, so it's, so it's a separate zoning, so it's very clearly defined of, you know, where our corridors and green spaces are versus development versus, you know, very active. Um, active recreation, so, so it's about defining it separately.
Okay. I see Counselor Lowhead's hand set up, and then I'll go to the mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Allen, so. Um, yeah, this is an important topic, I think, and I just, for clarity, I, I think that the wording in regards to the recreational zoning is taken directly from the Niagara Escarpment Plan in this draft, correct? Um, there's a larger topic here, but something that I, I'd like to ask about at this point is, um, in the major changes, the, the preamble to this report mentions additional dwelling units, um, on NEP lands, um, that being restricted now, come in line also with the, the NEP, which of course I think makes sense, everything that, that we do in that the NEP is the dominant document, needs to be in line with it. Um, I guess what I'm, I'm wondering here is, um, is there anywhere on Niagara Escarpment land where ADUs, um, are permitted? Uh, I mean, there is some sort of, uh, you know, gray area, I suppose, I think the recreational zoning is, is one of them. Um, we had a question here about institutional zoning, um, not long ago, you'll recall. Um, so maybe just a little bit more sort of clarity around that, and if there, if there is sort of, how definitive it is in terms of prohibition of ADUs on NEP land.
Ashley?
Yeah, certainly, so the recre- recreational resort zone, uh, the direction from NEC was to line it up exactly with the OP. So this language matches the OP's that like it's verbatim, exactly the way the OP is written in terms of permitted uses. And then the setbacks and lot coverage I left exactly the same as they used to be, so it's just carryover, we're going to keep it status quo. When it comes to ADUs, I believe it was only related to the secondary dwelling, or sorry, secondary settlement areas, is where uh, the Niagara Escarpment Commission was concerned. And again, they do think that they're going to see that language change within the twenty twenty seven version, they're already having discussions about it. Essentially, what's happened is the province has created language within the Planning Act that allows for ADUs, but this policy hasn't been updated to reflect it. So they are going to be taken into consideration, we're likely going to have to see some housekeeping amendments take place, once those plans are, um, are updated. So from my understanding, the ADUs is only related to the secondary, uh, the, the secondary, um, settlement areas.
Counselor Lowhead, any follow up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, yeah, thank you, I mean, that, that does offer some good clarity and, um, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, rereading the, the recreational zoning language as laid out um, in the NEP right now, it is, I think that there is still, you know, some substantial gray area. I don't know that we have enough time to, to talk about that today, um, but, um, I think it does warrant a conversation.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Mayor McQueen.
Just finish you up on that one, it is in rural. Cause I'm not in, and, and, um, but it comes natural, protected, rural. Designations of the NEC does allow ADUs. I'll have to go back, I got a book at home, it's two thousand seventeen, but it, I know from being at the table, that's the one that did carry the day, was, was rural. But we don't have a lot of rural in Great Highlands. We don't have a lot of rural, uh, zoning or designation, NEC designation or Niagara Escarpment Plan. But going back to the, uh, corridors. So back in about seventeen, Gray County was, was doing amendment to their official plan mapping, and one was um, green and gray. A lot to do with the corridors. And I'll tell you, I got a lot of pushback, because all of a sudden they had a open house here. A, a lot of agricultural farmers were pretty upset, because all of a sudden you're designating all these corridors, and what does that mean? So I think they made a change there, so you have to be careful of all of a sudden, and, you know, and, and the question was, well, if it's a deer run, well, what makes sure the deer runs there versus over here, and that was, it was, it was sort of a was a gray area. So I think you have to be careful on wording, because if, if you all of a sudden look at it, if it's a corridor for walking, so that's, that's the issue in Europe, is we have, they, they have corridors that people can walk all over your land. So I think we have to be careful of how it's worded, so I understand what you're saying is, is it's a non-development zone, right, not just open space. But I think you have to be careful, and if you word it like, uh, walking corridor, or something like that, right? So I, I, so, so the green, green and gray got scaled back because a lot of rural landowners were quite concerned of all these. It was all mapped out, all these corridors across people's land, especially farmers, right? And, uh, so they had a, like, they filled the there's people lined out the door here, the planners came down here, they were lined out the door up here, because the egg, uh, the egg office arranged that discussion with Scott, you got that, you had that Scott on that one. But I understand in the sense of just different from open space, it's, it's an undevelopment zone, that's a slope or however, however, whatever on that part, but, yeah.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Chair, I was, I was kind of along with what Mayor McQueen was just saying, I was going to ask Counselor Dubic for clarity if in what you're trying to suggest for the open spaces concept and, and fleshing out that idea, um, were you suggesting it as an ability for a for gray highlands to, in the mapping, create that zone, or was this more of like a resident's ability to zone their land to like conserve it in the future? So it's just kind of more of a question was like, were you wanting the maps to reflect that right away, or are you wanting an ability for a landlord to come?
Um, so, so, so I think that's a bit of an add on, um, in terms of, you know, landowner coming to wanting to, to add that on, um. And, and I think that's an interesting one, um, I think we've seen some programs or incentives out there where, um, you know, that can happen, I think I saw some, some bylaws in in, I would, I, I think, out in B C. Yeah, where, where, um, there's incentives for landowners to say, hey, this, this part can be, you know, sort of conservation or conservation, um, so I think that goes um, that's sort of another step, but I think it's also a very interesting one, you know, you know, as we continue to think about, um, being very clear, right, about um, you know, as we continue to grow as a municipality, where are we directing development versus where are we, you know, um, protecting our our, uh, our green spaces, because, um, you know, that is still very important, you know, as, you know, as we think about the harmony, you know, of the, you know, of the, of nature and we're part of nature, and so we think we need to think about that balance and that harmony.
So we're at twelve oh eight. Mayor McQueen.
I think when we go, I'm trying to find mapping, our, does it, our, our rural and ag and all that mapping, I'm not sure where to find it. But I will say, when you go to the public, you'll need printed maps. You've got to have printed maps where people can go up and look at their property. So I, I, I assume that was going to be the case, but, um, I see nods shaking, so because people will show up and, and if they can find their property, and maybe it's multiple maps, I don't know, to get the scale, I don't know.
So we're going to go to the public through a public planning hearing, basically.
I thought you're going to a, that you're going back out to the.
So.
I mean, going back to it like what we did in, in complex?
I thought the next step was the, the, the public hearing, yeah. So I don't know how they're going to see the maps. It's, it's not an informal open house.
Well, we can't ever move forward with this until you have the maps.
Well, we, we can have maps and they can be available online and they can maybe be available for pickup. But at the, the, this is going to be a statutory public meeting.
I think you're going to find that, uh, that's, that's, going through it before, that's where you had, like, people came out, look at a map, they go to their property, and then they have questions. You know, I, I'm, I'm struggling to try to find a map on here. Like, I went to the county website trying to download it, I mean, it's on Gray Highlands here. Certainly it'll be attached, but I think you're setting yourself up if you don't have a public process that people can see them on the map, however that works, but I thought you, I thought we're going back to the public again, and, and in a building.
Something we'll have to decide then.
Unless we do it at our town hall. No, no, you need physically have those maps in front of people, I believe.
We know when our next town hall is?
Sorry, I was just going to respond to the, uh, public planning hearing. Um, there would be an agenda, there would be links attached on that agenda where people could, um, we could break it down into areas to make it more clear for people, um, and, and people could click on the links. Um, we could have available copies printed, if, if, if people would like to have a copy.
Just even come and look at it.
Yep, we, we could have them set up in, in council chambers on uh, stands, so if people are in the office, they could take a look. Um, we could, there's certainly lots of things we can do to support the public planning process.
So this next meeting, I see a benefit to having it virtual, because people can tune in from anywhere, but I also see a benefit to being in person. Do we have the ability to, to be, uh, hibernate? Do we have the ability to to be hybrid but have it at a different location because? No, okay. So it's one or the other if we want a different location, okay? All right. I'm sorry, Ashley, go ahead.
I just wanted to highlight too that I I believe the intention is to send correspondence to anyone whose zone is changing as well. So if they're like, that will highlight what the zone is and what it's going to be and what those implications are. Um, if they're changing zones, like if the map is going to change on their property, they're gonna get notified. So they'll have the twenty days to come talk to us about what that means if they have have any concerns. It's a bit of a step above and beyond what you're obligated to do, but I think that was the general consensus. With council was to kind of go through and say, if there's a mapping change happening on your property, you're gonna get circulated. Is that the direction that you wanna go?
That's over and above those ten properties that you.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so this could be hundreds of properties.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
So that's up to council, I mean, that's not an obligation underneath the Planning Act, that was just something that uh.
I I think it's a great idea because then if they don't come and look into it and ask questions. It's it's on them, not us.
Mm-hmm. And there's a lot of people that just don't understand what that zoning bylaw update does and and what those changes really. I think it's the way to go. Yeah, it's a bit more costly in order to get all of those circulations out, it's been more costly from our end to go and pinpoint which properties are changing. But if I was on council, I would a hundred percent be fully on board with making sure they knew what the changes are so that there's no. You know, coming back once this is passed and saying, what do you mean, I can't build on this anymore, or what do you mean, it's gonna take me this environmental study, you know, the rule is still there. Uh, I would say there's not major changes happening with the mapping, uh, the only thing is you're. The color of what you were is going to change because of these environmental holding provisions that are being put on. But by by, you know, sending notice and explaining that, they may be happy with just that. And if they have further questions, they're more than happy to come talk to us. So it'll it avoids the need of, you know, coming to the meeting, checking to see what my, whether something has changed, we're giving it to them ahead of the, ahead of the game, so.
And is that report oppressive a button?
Sorry, in terms of.
To come up with all those properties?
Believe there's a way for us to take the parcel fabric and then take the zoning and there might be a way to do it digitally, which will be good easier. Otherwise, it's a matter of actually going through everything to see what's changing. But again, it's it's gonna be very much like the one I think is going to be most influential is those holding provisions that are gonna get added on. And we're gonna be able to see what those differences are between the old and the new, and then it's just zooming into those areas and getting, collecting the info.
And in that mail out, if there is a holding provision, then that. The definition of holding provision would be given so that people are suddenly, okay.
Yep.
All right.
And it's, I mean, it's one document for all of those ones holding provisions, so it's not like we need to reinvent it for every single property owner, it'll be general, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mayor McQueen.
So, so we have an idea how many properties?
Hundreds.
Yeah.
And you're gonna notify them how?
By mail.
By mail.
Wow. So that I I I don't disagree that's the way to do it, but I still think you need to go back to a a public forum so people can. Like, how is our staff, if you send out five hundred notifications and you get five hundred people showing up. And asking who, we don't have enough planning staff to handle that. Like, how are we gonna, like, I I obviously, it's good that people are being notified that there's a change to their property and what that is. But then how does it come back to us that we hear?
Would that, would in the notice, would it say, you know, come to the public meeting or or. Participate in the public hearing and ask questions then, because. There could be one question that and the answer satisfies two hundred people. It's not like we need that.
Which you can have people that don't even have a computer, they turn, you turn a computer on, like, all I'm saying is there's gonna be, we've got to be transparent across here. People can't have a computer and they need to come, how are we gonna accommodate?
Sorry, go ahead, CEO Goffin.
Thank you, um, Chair Ellen. It's 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 not unlike any other public planning hearing.
This is.
Comments can be forwarded to the planning department as well, that can be um submitted like. We do in a public planning hearing, um, holding it virtually allows us uh more flexibility. Um, to to, you know, bring people across to talk and and um have their say. Um, we've done public planning hearings before that have been contentious. And and had the potential of having five hundred people show up. Um, and and I think the most we had was about two hundred registered. But not all two hundred spoke, a lot of people just wanna hear what's what's said as well.
But that's about a specific property, this is talking about their property. This is different, this is about a property, this is about their property.
But when, once individuals who are in attendance understand what a holding provision means, perhaps that's all they need is to be. You know, pacified and understand the process if if that's the concern they have.
But what happens, they say, I don't want that on my property. I'm just.
But it it's the same as any other pub- public planning hearing.
I I just, well. Well, if we rely on on post-age, you know what our post-eggs, post-mail has been like?
But mail the last two days.
Yeah, yeah, it's like the whole week. Oh, who knows? Anyway, I just, I just have concerns. I'm glad that's being, every property is being notified, I think that's perfect, but we need to make sure we hear the feedback as well.
Ashley, is that your hand up again or still up again?
Up again, I just wanted to highlight that the idea with the notices, it's not going to be just your standard. Hey, come to this meeting, your zoning is changing with no explanation, because that would be cruel. Um, we will have a, you know, your zone, if you know, let's say it's karst. Hey, your property is designated and we're redoing a zoning bylaw, your property is highlighted as karst, this is the provincial regulation. You are already subject to these rules, we're putting a holding provision on it, uh, just to make sure that when we go to. You know, if you ever develop on the property, it's more transparent to you that this is on your property. Uh, the holding provision is dealt with this way, like, there's gonna be a full explanation, so I would imagine that you won't get. As many people as you think, because most are just be like, oh, well, it doesn't really change anything, everything's fine, I'll just, you know, throw it away and go on my business. You'll have some that are obviously going to not be under, not understand it and come and ask for clarification, but I mean, that's part of the public meeting.
So here's the issue, Mr. Chair, is all of a sudden their property is being subject to a restriction. That it's not there today, this happened back.
It is there today, they just don't know it.
Uh, so so wetland provision of a hundred twenty meters. Isn't there today?
Okay, that one.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, while I just.
It is there today, just the hundred twenty meters is there today.
From a wetland?
Yeah, from a provincially significant one, regular wetlands is thirty.
But this whole mapping is going through mapping all wetlands. Which is gonna have setbacks, that's gonna change people's ability to do.
It's exactly the way it is right now, we're not changing the the distance from wetlands or or provincially significant wetlands. So those are, those are completely staying the same, the only ones that are different are the holding provisions that we didn't have before. Which is like your karst and I can't remember which other ones, but they're they're a lot more minor. And the rules have been there, it's just they're they're not transparent because they're in the. Sorry, they're in the official plan and the county official plan, and our zoning bylaw doesn't reflect it because it's dated and didn't take that into consideration.
So I guess when will we see that mapping? Because it, we'll see that mapping and we'll start looking around where where it's going to affect. But what I'm saying is back in two thousand and four, it had a drastic effect on provincial significant wetlands. And people were in the building department, left, right and center. Because they know something's changing, that's the point that I was trying to raise. Because there's gonna be a drastic change.
But it's not this time, it's the restrictions are there. People, some people just don't know it, so better for them to know in case they do want to develop and they're prepared for that.
So just in clarity, if you're now gonna have a designation of a wetland. Today, it's not a hundred twenty meters. Cause it's probably not even identified. It's probably not.
Ashley's nodding her head, so.
So you're saying there's wetlands out there that are identified today that'll be showing on the new mapping, I thought this is identifying a new layer. That when you go to the billing department, they're not there. And you're saying when you go to get a billing permit today, what's going on to a new zoning bylaw proposed is on there today when you take a billing permit there?
Yeah, so the idea is that the wetlands are already in your official plan and your zoning bylaw, there may be some slight changes, but some of them. Uh, we'll assess that and those people will be circulated, but generally, what the intention is, is the the wetland already has a thirty meter holding provision. The provincially significant wetland that's identified already has a hundred and twenty year setback provision with that holding. So those aren't changing, those are staying exactly the same, you're already zoned that way. So we're not gonna be circulating the ones that are already there, it's anything that's above and beyond because of new updated mapping that's either come in. And I haven't checked to see what that drastically, I don't think there's much drastic changes since what's what's in there right now based on. Your consolidated version of your zoning bylaws that has been updated to reflect that. And and what's proposed, like, I I don't think the wetlands are going to come up as a major source of contention as part of the public planning. Hearing, I think it's more so to do with the karst and the other natural heritage features that we haven't got. Holding provisions on right now.
Right, last question is, when do we see the mapping as as us as a body?
When do we see them out?
So the the idea is that it's gonna be part of the public planning hearing, so that's what I'm aiming towards.
Okay.
You wanna see it before the public planning?
I certainly like.
A a few days at least.
Yeah, no, and then if you want me to come back and we can say, let's get this mapping, so you guys take a look at it first before it goes, that's fine too, like, I mean, I don't wanna rush. The public planning hearing if we're not feeling comfortable going to that meeting, so I'm more than happy to come back next month and show you what that mapping looks like. With the final version of the zoning and say, are we good? And then we can plan for the public meeting.
Yeah, I think that's the consensus.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, absolutely.
Councillor Wickens?
Uh, just a quick question for Ashley, will will the mapping show anything that has changed?
We can make that happen, yeah, we can say where the changes are.
Thank you.
Yes, that's good. Deputy Mayor?
I a hundred percent agree, we need to see the mapping, but I think we can see the mapping in context with the public meeting, because it. My premise is, I would like to see the process continue to move forward, so if we're saying Ashley's gonna come back in a month from now and show us the mapping and then we're gonna be a. And two or three weeks from then to book the actual public meeting and like, can we, can we not move to, like, if we understand the the. Bones of the structure, when the public meeting is situated, we're gonna see like seven days before. There'd be an agenda come out, just as there always is, we'll be able to see the mapping then and be able to review it and review it with the public then, like, I I just don't wanna see us. Delay. Things.
We can still schedule the public meeting. So it's a set date and then we get the mapping. You know, a a week or two or three before, we don't have to wait to see it before we schedule the.
As as long as we can keep the process going, so there isn't a delay, then I then I'm fine.
Okay. Pitying to get out of here, councillor Allwood.
Just just to uh some clarity on the mapping, so you know, we had discussed. Sorry. We had discussed previously that, you know, there were issues between the conservation mapping, the county mapping and uh. It's it's all now done under the GIS system, I assume. Am I, am I correcting that?
Yeah, it's all on the GIS system.
So if we go today to the county GIS system and you you can get different layers in there, I haven't done it for a while, but. You you can actually see the mapping, can't you, or?
Yep, yeah, so the 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 only thing that's not, I mean, the mapping's there, it's just. Yeah, it's a matter of taking the official plan, all of those layers and then creating a holding provision on the setbacks. So that's that's the one that's not there, is the setbacks to those holding or to the um, the natural features.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think we're okay, so we don't need any other motions, just the one that's written. Yeah, well, I know, but we don't need a motion to as of rights and all those things, just as discussed, okay, so the. Oh, okay, so.
Looking for mover, the motion is written?
Just waiting for everybody to pay attention. Gonna have to separate those two next meeting. Deputy Mayor? So I need a, need a motion here that council receive report PL twenty-five thirty-one. Presentation of draft zoning bylaw, volume four, and preparation for public meeting for information. And the council direct staff to proceed with hosting the public meeting in November. Taking into consideration the feedback received from council during this meeting. So mover, councillor Dubic, secondary councillor Allwood, discussion.
When in November?
No, I'm sure there'll be a a uh, no, a doodle poll or whatever it is and. All those in favor? That is carried, last motion that the committee adjourn until the call of the chair. At twelve twenty-five, deputy mayor is moving that. Councillor Lowhead is seconding that, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you very much, everybody, thank you, Ashley.